Good, so we're gonna start video for some folks and make sure people are muted. And go from there. Everyone that's joining, welcome. Just to ensure that your video is off and that you're muted and we can help with that from our end too. It is 7:01 and we are all here. So we're gonna start our meeting. So I'm gonna start with a roll call since this is a remote meeting. So go this way. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yeah.
Marwa Hogan?
Yes.
And Beth Lynn Houlihan? Yes, we are, these are, we are present and starting the meeting coming into 7:01. And I'm going to turn to our agenda. And as usual, I'm just keeping track. I have my trusty pen and paper here. But I will just let you know as a marker how we're doing with time, but that's all. Okay, so we have first our approval of prior meeting minutes, but given that we just met last week and Colleen did mention via email, she may have seen that she didn't have a chance to finish up other meeting minutes. Usually, obviously, we have at least two weeks between meetings, etc. So we do have some subcommittee, we can continue, just a reminder, if we can look at subcommittee meeting minutes and those, you can do those in your subcommittee sessions, approve those in your sessions so that you can, and use Lydia's handed Danny sheet that she created and ask her if you have questions about it. I think that's it for minutes then, for right now. So then, we're gonna move on from there. And we're going to move into the Chairperson's Report. That's me. So I threw together a few things. I feel like it only being a week since our last meeting. Why? What happened in a week? So just some things that I am noting, we will, as so folks know, I just continue to give a little bit of a, like a, some overview things and then members will go into a little more of their particular activities, including some committees and other such things in their member comments at the end. So one thing is that MSBA or LG, we got a, I think the email came out either late yesterday or today. And it just says that they're, they're just making sure we understand, we have a contact now that's following up with us from the MSBA and they want to make sure we understand that the eligibility period commences on May 1st. And they're looking to schedule kickoff meeting. And Mary Branley, we need to sign, there is an ICC which is, stands for something that I'm not gonna know right now.
Intent to, intent for something to, that we agree with the MSBA.
Is just to let them know that we understand the process. It leaves out the process and it's just like, you've read this and you understand what this process is.
Was that a new email today?
No, so they just sent, that's been one. I sent you the original.
Yeah, okay, okay, from last week, I think, or, yeah.
Yeah, and then they've just re-circled back and said, hey, we're looking to set this up and your eligibility period is opening. So that, I'm hoping, Mary Branley, that we can use your, yeah, your signature things. So it's the town administrator, the super, and the chair that sign. But I think for our purposes, we don't need to do it for Greg too. I think he'll figure out his way.
So. Say again, so it's Greg and then Mary Jane and yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, alright.
If you want to do all three of us and it's no, just spin off your back, I'm sure that would be fine with them. Okay, great. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you. Alright, so then, the next thing, let me get back to that document, is for everyone to know, I'm sure that members saw that we're working on the tri board meeting. That looks like they were looking for July 14th as the date for that. That would then include, just consider this, that would include new members to the board at that time. Since we'll have switched on July 1st.
Pending we have an election.
Indeed. Is there a question? I haven't, I haven't seen that there is any official question. We're just in uncertain times. I think that's all that you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so then, we're working on setting up FinCom meeting and Ken did put, that's an agenda item, so we'll talk about that a little later. And there was a lovely message of thanks from the students that was sent out to teachers yesterday. Jen got it, sent that out. And it was just in lieu of being able to have a parade. And it was just a lovely little message of thanks and a nice little uplift. And I wanted to mention that because that was a really nice, a really nice gesture for everyone. It's just very heartfelt thanks for all the teachers and I know kids are missing them terribly. Um, the other thing that I'm sure will come up later was there's, I thought it was just very interesting, excited to hear more about it at some point. And we did get some information via email from, we had two people attend the National School Board Association's advocacy. They had an event for school boards. So I think it was Lydia and Natasha. Did anyone else attend too? Yeah, so Lydia and Natasha attended and they shared some information with us from that. And then, another thing I wanted to make sure people were aware of is, this is for, if you, we've had so many emails going through. To check out, MASC has an update, like they, they put out an announcement and have an update and it's just, we have had a very nice message that went out for our community once the new remote learning guidance for Phase 3 was announced as being in the works. But MASC has just a nice, the MASC Association for School Committees had a nice email that went out, if you all saw, I just wanted to point you to it. Including some information on DSE trying to help provide family support. So, and in case, I'll mention more in that, my member comments. And then, we also, people may have seen that there was a parent, sort of a family survey that went out, caregiver survey that went out. And just so people, everyone's aware, there was also a companion staff survey that went out. So we'll get some feedback and information in this continuing process from everyone. So that's it. Thank you as, there just can, it's just hard to even say enough thank you to everyone for all you are doing here while I'm in my bedroom talking to you on our school committee meeting, because things are just so absurd in some ways. But everyone is really doing all that they can to make it work with such challenging professional, personal circumstances. That's it. So I'm going to hand it over to Mary Jane for interim superintendent's report and point you to the folders where she also included some notes for her report.
Okay, so as you know, Friday, we had additional remote learning guides. It didn't come out till a little bit late in the evening after 8:00. So we forwarded it to the principals and I just gave you a few highlights of what it talks about. It further talks about recommending the quality of remote learning, talking about teaching content standards. Really, it's now time to move on to the next level. So, but we've actually been doing a good job with that, so we're not too, too concerned with that section. And it also is encouraging districts to move towards more successful engagement, which we're going to be talking to our MEA about, about what that looks like. So that's what we're looking forward to working with them on that. And this is Phase 3, so he's looking for districts to continue to enhance and refine their remote learning plans, which, you know, thankfully, we've been doing, looking at feedback from the families. And I will not be sharing that feedback with you today because it's been a little bit busy for me, but I will definitely get that information to you. So really, he was talking about consistent engagement and meaningful connections. So those are the two things that we're focusing on. There was gonna be specific guidance on graduation, although we, as a district, is moving forward a little bit in our own vein with that. We're just really waiting for information about social distancing and what that's gonna look like. I've had some conversations with the principals and, you know, and the guidance department, and we really are engaging the students in what that looks like. So that's what we're looking to do right now. So hopefully, we'll have something in the next couple of, couple of, I'd like to say by the end of next week, because it is, you know, June is gonna be before you know it. So we'll try to work on that. And we're looking for additional guidance on Phase 4. And Phase 4 is really what school's gonna look like when we re-enter. And that's really what everybody's kind of hyper-focused on right now. You know, does it look like the summer or what's gonna happen in the fall? So really, a lot of people are taking the, we're gonna close up schools on our own, but we need support to get Phase 4 working. And that's what we're looking to do. I sent you a link of the remote learning guidance, so you can click on that. I'm sure you've all seen it, but I did give you a link in my notes. And again, we're meeting with the MEA. I sent something out, hopefully Friday we're looking to do, but if not, it'll be definitely Monday. You've asked about kindergarten registration. To date, we have 90 students registered for kindergarten. I sent you a correspondence of what Donna and Tim sent out to the, to the families. Kindergarten screening unfortunately is not gonna take place until the fall. And since we weren't able to have the, the regular kindergarten screening, they did send the PowerPoint out to families. And they also talked about the Spanish immersion program. On the communication about, I gave to you a correspondence from the town administrator regarding furloughs. And that's something that the Board of Selectmen talked about on Monday. And they've asked us to take a look at that, so that's something we'll have to look at in the, in the, in the future. However, the furl, we've, not furlough, but the Excel program, since it is a self-sustaining program, really furloughed 20 of its employees at this point. So this is gonna not result in any particular savings, but it's certainly not gonna increase the deficit in our operating budget. So that's a good thing. We did release the school building substitutes. There was six of them at $80 a day, which saved us about $2,400 a week. We did keep them onboard initially because we thought maybe we were coming back, but now that they're not coming back, you know, we have decided to, to let them go. And they are eligible for unemployment. It's just very difficult to pay somebody if they're not, you know, performing any services. So it's, you know, a little bit here and a little bit there.
It's furlough instead of layoff, right? Just the distinction is furlough, not laying off.
Right, they'll be back, they'll be back. You know, they've all asked to come back and they're great substitutes, so it's not a problem.
Yeah.
But they can still collect.
Yeah.
So that's not, you know, there's a difference.
They collect unemployment, right?
Pardon? They can still collect unemployment.
Yeah.
And honestly, I'm hearing that you can get more from unemployment right now during this time. So, you know, getting extra money right now during this crisis. So, so, you know, that might be something that will be helpful to them. I'm sure who, who doesn't want more money? But we do have 12 custodians, but right now, we had a part-time custodian. We did lay off who was just filling in for a custodian of medical leave. That custodian will be coming back, so we let that part-timer go. So that is, that is not a callback unless, you know, unless there's another issue, but right now, it was just a part-time. Um, so a couple of the notes about furloughs, you can take a look at that and read that. And then I did talk about senior activities and graduation. The senior advisor, as well as the principals and some teachers, are looking to put signs up for the senior class. They're in the middle of being printed right now and we are conveying, we're hoping to get that signs out to the students in the next couple of, probably beginning of the second week of May, so we can put signs on their lawn. It says, you know, Maynard School Class of 2020. I've seen them around. And we're working on a plan 2-2 way to get that out. Some districts are letting the teachers take a bus and pay for that and moving around and doing it together as a group. But I'm not sure what that looks like for social distancing. We certainly don't want people running outside and, you know, waving to the bus. So that's something we're going to, to look at, how to, to put the banners out, I mean, the signs out. It may just be as simple as teachers driving in their cars and putting them onto people's lawns, but we're, we're looking at ways to, to do that. And, you know, one of the things we threw out for graduation was kind of like a drive-up graduation, kind of like a drive-in. You'll have somebody on the big screen doing their speeches and people can drive up in their cars and pick up their diplomas. That's just something we talked about. I'm, you know, we've also talked about, you know, delaying graduation, but that becomes a difficulty because we still don't know what the summer is gonna look like at this point. So, you know, really, I think we're moving forward to try to provide some kind of virtual or some kind of graduation now because, again, kids are going to college or whatever it may happen. So this is what we're looking to do right now.
I've seen some apps. They have even like virtual graduations where they get the kids in the cap, like they put a cap and gown and they can do like a video about themselves. And kind of, which, you know, be great to hear more about.
I looked into, they are a little bit costly, so they do cost money, but we could probably do it on our own. Oh, and I have one more thing I should have put in here. Holly Camaro is looking to work with Rita and the principals to do a kind of a, pictures of the seniors with little blurbs about them in the, in the Beacon Villages. So we're looking.
Yeah. Are we, do we have any savings though? I mean, I'm guessing that we, we had money probably allocated for costs for a graduation and what that would be. I imagine it might be something that.
They're pretty, they're pretty expensive.
Okay.
It's not, they're not cheap. If it was something I thought, you know, would be.
Viable.
And to be honest with you, nobody wants to sit in their home. I think at least if they're in the cars, it might be.
Yeah.
They're in wait. Nobody wants to sit in their bedroom and be graduated, you know?
Yeah, I know a lot of community members are really eager to help out in any way, so that'd be great.
We're, we're trying to get through, right now, we're trying to get the grading system in place for the seniors and how that works, and we just completed that. So all students will be receiving, you know, credits not gonna, GPAs are not gonna be affected for, for, for the, for the students right now, so. And that's what the colleges all said. And I will get you a copy of that as soon as it's finished up. We just looked at it today and looking to make our final comments and I'll have everybody take a look at that once it's done. And that's what we have.
Thank you. Thank you, Mary Jane.
You got it.
Alright, so we are now going to move into Agenda Item Number 5, which is Budget Updates. We did allocate a bunch of time for this. This came out of, obviously, this is a huge consideration for all municipalities right now. And so we had a discussion last week that led into getting some clarity, Budget Subcommittee meant on Monday afternoon. And you'll see in your folder that there are a bunch of materials from, to consider in relation to budget. So I guess what I'd like to do is first hand it over to Budget Subcommittee members or whoever you'd like to run this portion. As you'll see, we have 45 minutes. We don't have to use all that time, but it turns out we don't need it, but just to have enough time to really get into whatever we need to get into. We do have on there that we're voting. I don't know that there's anything that we actually will end up needing to vote on tonight. We all know that there are things, that there's a 5-1 deadline for certain things, a May 1st deadline. And then, whatever else that we may need for more clarity before we'd be able to make any considerations around a vote and we could do another meeting next week. So here we are. So I hand it over to the Budget Subcommittee to Mary Branley and to Lydia Clancy.
So Lydia and I had gotten together last night and kind of, and I think we sent you guys a copy. You know, Lydia and I have been in the thick of it with Jen and Mary Jane and Irene, you know, obviously since September. But knowing that it sort of all came together last week and there were a lot of questions in that. So what we did was we put together, based on the letter that Colleen had sent out about the budget of the 3.66 and what the administrative changes are gonna be and the district recommended budget includes what those categories are. We went through each one of those categories and had some questions actually for Jen and Irene that they were able to answer today. But it pretty much laid out the entire, firstly, all the changes that are gonna make up, be made up for next year. So I don't know if you want to go through that one by one or if you just want to ask questions about.
I think it'd be helpful for the public to kind of go through most of them because.
The only problem with that, Natasha, the only problem with that is that this is not the quote-unquote "public hearing on the budget." So I'm just concerned with, are we following protocol and procedure if we do that tonight, rather than wait for the posted public hearing on the budget?
Well, I think it's good for us to talk about them since we first, yeah, I think, we're not voting, but I mean, many of these people don't even understand what we're talking about. There hasn't been discussion about, you know, changes.
That would happen at your posted public hearing on the budget. That's, that's why I'm asking. I mean, it's up to you, okay? But there's this, there's an established procedure in place where you are, you know, the superintendent presents to the school committee the budget. The school committee votes, the budget was voted on, and now the next step in that procedure, despite all the tweaks that we have talked about, is to have a public hearing. And that public hearing, you know, has been rescheduled at a date to be determined. This is not that public hearing. And again, the only concern is that somebody's gonna say to you later, I didn't, I didn't listen to your meeting on April 29th because you didn't post it as being the public hearing on the budget.
Right. Yeah, I think that's okay, because we can have another opportunity the day of the public hearing to talk more about it as well.
So Irene, how, how are we going to be able to discuss the information that Mary and I have gathered over the last couple of days? How are we supposed to be able to share that with other school committee members if we can't discuss that now?
I'm not, you can. I just want to make sure, there's a difference between school committee saying, gee, we had a question, you know, here's what the answer was versus having a public hearing about the budget. That's all. I just want to make sure that, that everyone, you know, and again, your decision, I just want to make sure that you're prepared for possible backlash if somebody says, wait a second, you know, you were having a public hearing on the budget that wasn't posted.
I think some of these things are new information for the school committee to weigh. And so from that perspective, I think it's important for us to go through.
Okay, I mean, hopefully, we're ready. You've got the questions, we gave you the answers. I'm more than happy to consider them.
So one, one option to.
Michelle's trying to say something.
Michelle needs to be unmuted. I can't seem to unmute her. Colleen, it might be you.
I wasn't trying to say anything. I was just signing in to say hi.
Hi, Michelle.
Hi, Michelle. Alright.
I'm like, sorry to interrupt.
No, well, we can mute you, I guess. It feels wrong, but we'll do it, okay? So I, there's something that I was very important that I did not mention at the beginning of this meeting. I apologize for that. So two things, one is just for the public to understand that this meeting is being recorded. So, and if anyone else were doing so with any, in other, any other fashion, they would just need to let us know that that's the case. And the second thing is that we are accepting, you'll see, everyone will see that the way right now in remote meetings, if you're new to us doing a remote meeting in the agenda, it gives you my, the Chair's email, which is me at this point, so it's b@houlihan@maynard.k12.us for any citizens' comments. So I, we need to get those by whatever time it says on the agenda.
It says, Colleen had played.
Thank you. So that we can, and then we'll read those out. So I just, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that, one, and then two, I'm wondering about doing a little bit of a, if we go through the sections of the budget and do like an overview and then the questions that people have, as opposed to actually like going through the individual detail of each piece. And school committee members could take each section, we kind of explain generally that section and then talk through whatever school committee members feel like they need to ask questions about.
Yeah, because there's a lot of information that came through fast and furious in the past, like, you know, less than 24 hours, and so.
Yeah. Fast and furious, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, and I just feel like we need to have amongst ourselves, although it be, we can only do it in the public. So it might be repetitive conversations at some point when the public hearing does occur. But I think it's important for us to talk about what has come through and the rationale behind some of that.
Absolutely do that. And, and I guess Irene will tell us if we're heading down the wrong path, because sometimes I don't know, you know, what we can be forward talking about versus not. So.
I said, I don't think we should be talking about positions and salaries publicly at this point.
Right, so that's a place to start. What were we gonna say, Lydia?
Oh, I was just going to say that because there are so many different variables that we still have to consider that I felt like we should present the information just as that, just as information and not whether we have a preference one way or the other at this point.
That was sort of where we were going, was just the information that we had, the, the way that this whole year culminated into what the proposal is for next year. And the all moving parts and, you know, places that we're talking about repositioning and that kind of thing.
Okay.
Because when you do take a look at it, I mean, Lydia and I are, you know, a lot more privy, obviously, than, than you guys. So I totally understood what was happening, what was coming through last week, the frustration in that, so just trying to alleviate that. So can we talk about?
Can I have a question first before, just to piggyback off of what Mary Jane, so Mary Jane, your concern is talking about, because I know there's some things that are time-sensitive that would be May 1st, and so what is your hesitation? What specifically are you hesitant about talking about? That I want to be sensitive to that and, but I'm not really sure. I didn't, I don't.
Like, I think we're okay with the time sensitivity. I don't, I don't think we have, I know that we had talked about contracts, but those contracts aren't due until, you know, June. So I think we're okay with that. So specifically, and we can talk about generally, general thing, but individual names and salaries, I guess, individual names.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it's more my, yeah, okay, so more like high, like aligning positions. You know, that, okay, thank you for just clarifying that a little bit more, because I want to make sure. We can talk a little bit about some of the things, but not get into the individuals versus the role and the, the models or whatever. Okay, got it. Thank you.
I also ask a clarifying question for anybody that, so for May, what, what are there things for May 1st that would need to be considered?
I think there were. That's why.
I understand.
Yeah, that's why.
For administration, it's not the case. Administration, it's not the case.
No, I thought they don't automatically renew though at their current contracts if not given 60-day notice.
It doesn't usually happen until June, is my understanding.
But the, but the contract says May 1st, or it says.
Contract says.
60 days.
So that'd be May 7.
What I, what I would strongly recommend at this point, because we're talking about individuals with their contracts in a public session. The administration central office is aware of what changes need to be made and we are making those changes and we'll be ready by.
But I don't know that we're agreed on some of the changes.
So Mary Jane, would it be, is it a possibility to broadly extend contracts, not individually, just administrative, say for three months? And then we, so it gives us time to revisit potentially with more information that might come in, because I think we're, we're, based on what the town is sending also. We don't, we don't know what's gonna happen now, but I think trying to be sensitive to not auto-renew based on status of, of everyone else's. I don't know the right answer.
I don't think I understand. I just don't think I understand what you're asking me.
So right now, the contracts, most of them, not going into specifics, but are worded in a way that, that they need 60-day notice and then they renew. Correct. Irene, are you, I know, Colleen, you've seen them as well.
I believe that 60-day is if their job was eliminated. Correct.
Eliminated or something. Or changed though.
I don't. Someone already notified of that. They were already notified.
Alright, so we don't, yeah. Okay, so we should move on to the next then. Alright, so under the administrative changes, this is the sheet that Colleen had sent about the budget, the new budget request, the 20 million and change. There were the administrative changes, the first two categories. Can we say those out?
Wait, which, which document are we looking at? Because I know there's, there's a couple of.
Sent.
Oh, from, is that from last week?
Yeah, I think Colleen just sent it within the last couple of days.
It's called Budget Notes for 2020 to 2021.
Okay.
So in that, it talks about the change in the Assistant Superintendent. Is that okay for us to talk about, Jen?
Sure.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask because I don't want to get us in trouble. So with that position, because we, because of the additional $150,000 cut that the Board of Selectmen asked us to take for next year, it resulted in Jennifer offering to go down. Jennifer offering to go down. So it resulted in one principal at the Green Meadow Elementary School instead of the two principal model. And Jennifer has offered to go down to, um, the elementary school to offer support to our new principal. Um, there will be one other position that will be cut. Um, but that's, um, that's where, what's going to happen at Green Meadow. And then there's also somebody coming up from Fowler, going down from Fowler, correct? A guidance counselor or?
So that was not as a result of the budget reduction. That was the plan with the budget proposal. Um, so that was the, the additional increase of a 1.0 guidance counselor across the district. So you will have one guidance counselor at Green Meadow, two guidance counselors at Fowler and, uh, two guidance counselors at the high school.
Right, exactly.
And that was because there was splitting, right, uh, Jennifer for?
Yep.
Yep, okay.
And then we also have an adjustment counselor at Green Meadow.
Correct.
Correct? Okay. All right. Um, then, let's see. The facilities position, um, that we've talked about, it's going to be 75% reflective, um, coming out of our budget and then 25% coming out of the town because 75% of the work will be done with the buildings, um, the school buildings. Um, guidance, the increased guidance support we just talked about. Um, so then we had the question about increased funding for literacy, professional development and coaching. Um, and having to do with the Student Opportunity Act. Do you want to talk about that, Jen?
Um, sure. I think what's important to note is we are likely not, um, we should not expect to receive the, the Student Opportunity Act funding. Um, the good thing is Mike Ozo, um, in his infinite wisdom, um, budgeted the Chapter 70 funding flat, not including Student Opportunity Act funding. So, um, even if Chapter 17 comes back as it is without that funding, we are not looking at additional reductions. Um, we had allocated $30,000 in the original proposed budget in December um, for increased literacy, professional development, uh, for early learn, early literacy. That remains there. Um, I am working with Mr. Rulo, um, and, um, all of our, um, literacy programs, um, to figure out what the best, uh, use of those funds will be to be able to provide support. Additionally, um, this gets into something later on. Um, we're looking at, um, some special education, um, changes that might help early literacy programming at Green Meadow.
And the other piece was that, um, even though we're not getting the $39,000 from the Student Opportunity Act, the survey, there was a survey that was sent out to parents and staff.
Yes.
Um, to ask them what, where they, they saw us needing to go. And it came back to implement a high-quality aligned curriculum, um, and also the literacy program. So those were the two strengths. So even though we're not getting the money from the Student Opportunity Act, we're using that 30,000 for that. Right?
Correct.
That's right. Yeah, we have money within our budget aside from that in order to do it.
Right.
So it's a miracle that was to come in. Let's say that miracles happen. Uh, we, Jennifer would, I'm sure be able to, uh, find increased ways to, uh, to work on that as well.
Absolutely.
Very well.
So the next piece was the expanded computer science pathway, um, um, for the high school. And, um, so can you, can, and that's going to require a 1.0 full-time FTE, um, being hired at Fowler.
Correct.
So, um, so that we can expand that program up at the high school. Can you just let us know what that's going to look like at the high school?
Sure. Um, so we don't have quite the, the specific classes that are going to be offered. Mark Sinopoli has done an incredible job of building that program over the last several years. Um, and essentially, um, we will be able to offer introductory coding programs, um, computer science programs and basic coding. Um, Java, we will be also be able to offer some interesting programs about web design or game design. I can't remember which specifically. Um, so forgive me, um, Mr. Sinopoli, if I get those wrong. Um, and, uh, we will also very exciting be able to offer AP computer science and we have some, based on course requests, efficient numbers to run that group.
So is that going to be right from, um, there's going to be courses available from grade nine through 12th then it sounds like with this one person?
We will have, with that, with this change, we will have computer science for our students K through 12.
So Mr. Sinopoli then is going to move up to the high school, yes? And then we're hiring or placing at Fowler?
Um, I, so we will, we are work. We are working internally on staffing placements. Uh, we, we have placed a, um, I believe it's been posted, a 1.0, um, position at Fowler. Um, make of that what you will.
Yeah.
Sounds like a good plan.
Yes. And I do want, um, credit to Mr. Sinopoli. It, it has been his vision. Um, he took over this program, um, as you may recall from being a seventh grade math teacher, developed it, built it. And, um, we are extremely fortunate. Um, and he has done that. Lisa DeSalvatore, who is at our, uh, Green Meadow School is doing some amazing work with her students as well as Sarah Pazner. Um, and it's, it's really exciting and we, we fully anticipate the state coming down and requiring computer science instruction. Um, we, Maynard's ahead of the curve.
Right. Remind me, was this the, the courses that we had up at the high school that we brought them, we weren't getting enough, um, um, enough students going up to the place? But which one? Was that the engineering?
That was engineering. Yeah.
Okay. I couldn't remember which of the two it was. Okay. All right. So speaking of, um, the engineering pathway for grade nine and 12.
So that, oh, go ahead. Sorry.
No, I was just going to ask you.
Uh, so that is, um, we offer two courses in the program of studies. Again, um, as Mary was indicating, we had, um, limited, uh, if any requests for the engineering programs we had at the high school several years ago um, to look, to better use that resource. Um, we, uh, moved those engineering programs into the Fowler School. This is, I believe, the third or fourth year, maybe fifth year, um, of that happening. Um, and we have, we offer two computer science, I'm sorry, engineering programs in the program of studies. It looks like we will be able to fill one of those classes, one of the two. Uh, we are using Project Lead the Way, which is a nationally recognized, uh, nationally renowned program that allows students to participate in engineering pathways in individual courses or to complete a pathway and receive college credits, um, through reputable programs like Worcester Polytechnic Institute, Rensselaer Polytechnic Institute and others. Um, right now, we are going to be able to offer the introductory program. Um, and we are able to do that by simply reallocating point two of a current teacher, uh, to be able to teach that program. So that is not a, um, that is just a reallocation.
Um, the certification that, that teacher is going through, um, and that will be completed by fall?
In terms of the training, yes. The Project Lead the Way training, yes.
Okay. And is there a cost associated with that certification?
Yep. Yep. There's professional development costs that we've built into the professional development budget.
Okay.
Then, um, the next piece was the expanding, um, the co-taught classes. Um, so adding grade three so that we'd have an expansion in the program of grades one through five.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, that was another piece that came out and, and, um, and then the increased technology curriculum, professional development at all building levels. You said that's basically going to be $5,000 across the buildings. So in total. Um, I don't know if, if we can talk about the next two bullets because they have personnel.
Yeah, I don't.
Yeah, we, we, we've got a little bit of restructuring in the schools because we've got, um, smaller class sizes. So there's going to be some restructuring there.
We can, we can discuss that.
Oh, we can? Okay, sorry.
Just not names.
Okay, right. So, so we're cutting, um, one kindergarten class and the para, um, because of a reduction in class sizes. So it'll still result, class sizes of 22, um, for the English, um, classes and then 25 for Spanish immersion.
So the one thing I do want to note about that, Mary, is that that average number was built off of an overall class size of 110. Um, as you heard from Mary's, um, uh, super, Mary Jane Superintendent Report, sorry. Um, Mary Jane Superintendent Report, um, we are not there. Um, so just so you know that that class size is built off of a number of 110 students in the overall class.
Right. So Spanish immersion was 21 as of now for, for kindergarten.
Correct. And, and the other kindergarten classes will be smaller as well, um, because we simply don't have the, the registrants.
Okay, all right. Significantly smaller?
Yeah, about 20 students. And, and I did ask a little bit from the preschool. I think there was just one preschooler that didn't register. But I believe that student, uh, maybe moving out of town. I'm not 100% sure. So other than that, I can't, they don't really anticipate 20 more students. So.
You said 95, Mary Jane?
90. It was 90.
90.
And I wonder, I mean, even if you get.
Per class.
Yeah.
Sorry, one second. We have one person at a time. So Lydia and then Natasha. We're going to hear either of you.
It looks like about 18 students per class.
Which puts us pretty much where they were before. So, right? Yeah. So.
Natasha.
Don't students so notoriously move in during the summer?
Um, we have. We have, um, the 110 number was based off of the last five-year actual kindergarten enrollments. That was where we got the 110 number. So we're using data in that.
Yeah, Mary, I was thinking that, um, similar, that in light of what's going on right now, I, I don't imagine that, um, people are enrolling a child. Is going to be right first in front of everyone's mind potentially. And so I, I wonder if we might get some late stragglers once. Um, so, because how does, how do they enroll right now remotely if someone wanted to?
So we have the, I believe we have the paperwork that has been sent out to families and that paperwork comes back into the offices and that is still occurring.
They just like make copies of their documents and they would send them in, um, at home?
So generally speaking, um, the kindergarten enrollments come in, the documents get dropped off and then anything that is missing, the staff follows up with on. Again, I do want to emphasize that the 110 student number, which is what got us to an average class size of 22, that was an average over the last five years. So even if we do see an increase in enrollment, um, we are look, we looked at actuals over the last five years, um, for what our kindergarten class sizes were.
Yeah, I heard, I heard that.
No, I'm actually hoping that they are going to be as big as what you talked about. Um, and there are, I will say that there are still a decent number of people even now. People are coming into town. Young families are, you know, the houses are selling and people are coming into town. So that's what I was thinking too, that we might have some.
Yeah. I remember you saying that before too, that the real estate market is really not.
The one thing that's kicking.
Let up.
Now, but anyway, um, and then, so then.
Mary, I just want to jump in for one second too, because you said that the 18 is the average size now. Our class, the kindergarten classes, correct me if I'm wrong, Mary Jane, are much lower than that currently.
It's about 14 right now. So. They're about 14.
Okay, sorry.
Yep.
And, I don't know if I should say this out loud. Would we be able to make another adjustment? If, to maybe go down another, another class if we find that they were just.
In kindergarten?
I mean, if we're 14 now and.
So I would recommend, um, and I can send you, because we have this analysis, I can send you what the projected class sizes are and what it would look like for five sections versus four versus, I actually did it all the way down to three sections. Not that we're that small. Um, and I can send that information out to you. I think, uh, you know, at this point, I would recommend that we, we can sit with the five sections in both K and one. Um, the class sizes will be reasonable, very, very reasonable. Um, and, and should we need to look at further reductions? Do we have space to increase our class sizes, uh, to larger numbers? Yes. I don't think that at this point with the numbers that we're receiving from the state, um, in terms of what we should be planning for our budget for next year, we need to be reimagining our programs in that way. And we talked a little bit about that at the Budget Subcommittee.
I know I do. I was just looking to see if I had that because, um, you had given that to us at one point.
Yeah, Mary, I think we're okay. I mean, the state really clearly said has moved forward with, with what you, what you already have in place. Um, you know, hopefully they're going to, you know, um, the state has kind of committed to saying the education is going to be the last place they cut. Um, so I think, you know, I don't, honestly, cuts are not actually necessary. I don't think, you know, honestly, we're not looking to cut anybody. I think we were really looking to just reallocate some of the, the funding. Um, and Irene can give you a little update when we're done with this about, you know, what the third, the fourth quarter looks like. But really the, we're not looking to cut money from the budget. It's just really a lot of reallocation. So I, I just want to make that clear to everybody. You know, we're not cutting the budget. We're just reallocating it for different things. So we're, you know, I don't think we have to cut people because we need to cut our budget. I, I guess what I wanted.
But we're cutting, we're cutting people though because, um, programming shifts are happening, right?
But those programming shifts are not budgetary. They are, they are being shifted because.
Programming. They're programming shifts. Yes.
It is in the best interests of, of, of our district to move in those directions.
Yeah.
Except for we all expressed, um, concern last week about reducing the paras by as many as was suggested. And I believe we asked a way to figure out to, to keep at least one more, um, instead of letting go five.
So we're not, I, I think the important piece here in terms of this is that there are several that, of that five that will be through attrition. So the people are not being lost. The positions are, are being reduced. And additionally, I, I, I hear the, the concern, um, about maintaining paraprofessionals. But I just don't know that we should be spending money on positions that are not based on need.
Well, I wonder, Jennifer, I was reading, uh, Colleen's notes. And so one of the things that, and I get, you know, um, you cut a section, a kindergarten section, you know, a paras associated with that, um, makes sense. Um, the, the idea of three paras equating to one special ed teacher, um, I, I, I heard that. Um, and so that's four paras. And then, um, I wanted to get a little bit more understanding about, um, two paras at Fowler.
Because the current, the current third grade does not have co-teaching. When that, when that third grade becomes fourth grade, we are able to allocate some of, or put, place some of those students who are currently being, receiving paraprofessional supports into a co-taught classroom, uh, reducing the need for those positions.
Yeah, because I saw also there was indication of there was a significant need in the rising grade four population. And so I was trying to, um, marry those two distinctions when we're talking about reduction of paras at Fowler and then we're acknowledging the, the, the need.
So that.
That particular rising fourth grade class.
That need that, and I apologize about not being clear there, that need that I, we were identifying there is not for students who are being supported by paraprofessionals that would, um, be put into the co-taught classroom. That is for some separate programming that we need for the, for some of our, um, mo, our severely disabled students that are rising up into grade four. Um, and Carol, Carol Gayhan and the team chairs are working on, um, allocation of special education staff to be able to support, um, those students as they move up into our Fowler programming. So that is a separate, um, component from the, um, co-taught.
So, um.
The reduction of those two paraprofessional positions was as a direct result of looking at, um, placement of students into this, and little P placement, not big P placement, um, into the co-taught classroom and the need, the, that those services for those specific students, um, would be, be, being able to be provided by the special educator rather than those paraprofessional positions.
Right. What about the paras that will be reduced in the rising second grade class because they're going into a co-taught?
Um, so we don't look at, we don't look at it sort of overall in that capacity. Um, it's, we look at the, so basically what happens from the special education perspective, Carol Gayhan, um, Patty Tuhey, Chris Kitchell, um, and the special education teachers look at, starting in really January, um, begin to think about next year's placement to figure out what would work best for the students. Um, identify, uh, who the students are that may benefit from being in a co-taught, uh, classroom space. And then figure out what paraprofessional support would be needed in that capacity.
Okay.
I, I just think that's interesting. Um, and again, I'm just trying to marry the understanding of the IP team process where it sounds like those decisions are being made outside of an IP team meeting where if there's a known need that that, that happens now, um, predetermining that just, um, just concerns me, um, in, in many ways. And I also want to just reiterate what I expressed last week where, um, we, we do, we do know that kid, all kids, not just specialty kids, but all kids will be needing, um, additional support next year. And I feel like we're cutting real deep into the folks that we will need to be.
And I feel like we're cutting real deep into the folks that we will need to be helping some of these kids potentially, um, who have either regression or, and, and we're setting ourselves up in, in an area of where I, I hate so that we eliminate positions and then we're looking to rehire again, um, in, in the fall. That doesn't make sense from a, 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 just a business process in general. We know that this is on our horizon. I feel it's short-sighted.
And we also know that, that many kids on IEPs are sensitive to the paraprofessionals that they work with and changes, drastic or sudden changes for them. That transition can also cause regression and issues. And it's better for us to maintain, uh, consistent staff of paraprofessionals rather than having them coming and going.
And I know that's one of the biggest concerns I've heard from, um, just staff in general is that the, the turnover sometimes is, it's hard from, you know, to train to relearn everything, um, and, um, the consistency, um, you know, just try to anticipate. I just wanna make sure we're positioning ourselves in this regard.
With all due respect in, in, in regards to the paraprofessional, um, you know, program as compared to a co-taught piece, we are going to give a presentation, um, and the reason we didn't do it tonight is because I wanted to have the teacher voices, um, because those are valued, um, in terms of working with the students. Um, we did have our meeting today. Um, and I, I think that, it, I, I understand the perception, um, that if we have more bodies, um, you know, more positions that we're going to be better suited to be able to, um, meet student needs. Um, by all accounts, by the, the anecdotal data and the statistical data that we were looking at, um, to prepare that presentation for you. The co-taught classroom spaces are able to meet those needs in some cases better than, um, in a pull-out support or with a paraprofessional support. Um, so I, I understand the, the concern. Um, but I think if we're looking at needs, uh, significant needs of our students, particularly around social, emotional, um, components, I would, I would really recommend and advocate that, that we use professional staff members, um, to be able to do that.
And I think, Jennifer, I just wanna add to that. So I, I, I totally think the co-taught model is great. So I'm not, it's not that, um, yeah, we don't pursue that in any regard. I think that's beneficial. But I think based on what you've previously stated, that, that, um, supports a certain profile of child, right? So.
We're not reducing paraprofessionals in another profile.
No, but the co-taught classroom, right? It, it addresses the needs of a particular profile of child, correct?
Correct. But we are not reducing paraprofessionals for students who we are not placing into a co-taught program.
Okay.
Right, but those are paraprofessionals that could be used potentially to support other children who might need it later, right?
I don't know that, I, I, I think financially, um, just from a fiscal prudence perspective, um, hiring for potential future need that we don't have in terms of, uh, a current student who is going through an IEP evaluation process or other components, I don't know that that's a fiscally prudent process regardless of global, you know, the global situation we're in now.
Retaining, not hiring, we would be retaining.
I've never seen, I, I understand like that we, my, if we move forward and we're gonna need those paraprofessionals, this is what we've always done. Someone moves in in the middle of the year and they need a paraprofessional, they get it. So, um, we end up moving, since I've been, since I, I don't know, I, I can't speak for anything else. But then what I've seen and heard as far as guidance the last five years is that when you're, when you're doing the budget, it's this, it does end up being this moment in time and it has to be based on need because you can't anticipate, because it ends up being different in ways you can't even understand until you get there. Um, and particularly this year, I see that that's very possible and we're gonna have to figure that out. But if we try to anticipate it now, I think we could, it's just like we're saying, we need to fiscally consider, we have to have some measure and, and going off of the need that is there and what we, but what we're able to do in like a thoughtful way without taking something away from someone based on what we know they need. And that's what I hear them saying they're trying to do. I, I don't want, so I, I just see that that's how. Always feels funny to do it every year to be able to think, to think of, to have to think of it that way. Because even when we're talking about it, there could be, uh, five students that move in this summer and they all end up needing a paraprofessional to start the year. And when you provide it, that's what we, that's what you do.
But then where does that money come from?
Out of district, now so we have five fewer students than, than we did. It can go either way. So Beth Lynn, you're absolutely correct. The budgeting for what, you know, your best guess on the needs is.
Lydia, where that funding comes from is that is why it is best practice to not spend current year circuit breaker money. So that when those needs do arise, you have that funding available to do so. Unfortunately, over the last several years, for a variety of reasons, um, last two years, I think at least, we have needed to spend current year circuit breaker money. Um, we have some good news, um, in regard, in that potential good news. Wait, no one knows what's happening tomorrow, but some potential good news, um, through, through some analysis that Irene has done, um, that could get us into a more healthy position in that regard for next year.
Well, and isn't that the idea of the revolving fund that Michelle had been instrumental in setting up too for the special ed for unanticipated future, um, expenses for new students that are moving in?
Yeah, but do we have any money in that?
We do, I believe, right, Irene?
How many of these positions?
No, it's not much because the only way we can put money into it is if we don't spend it in our budget and we tend to spend most of our.
So the reduction of the paras, how many of that is, um, attrition that we're absorbing through attrition versus, um, a person?
Mary Jane, do you have that number?
What do you mean?
How many, how many are we, are there anyone retiring? How many of that law, that staffing are we able to absorb through attrition?
I don't have any officials, but I believe that, um, you know, I have two that were, that, that we are anticipating we will not have to, um, uh, that are not coming back. I don't have official, but I anticipate two, perhaps three, but two is, two is pretty much, um, a, a, a given.
So we're saying, um, cause I'm looking at, so they have two paraprof, two paras for, that are going potentially.
You already have one that, that, that left this year. So that's, that's, we're down one. And then I have one that, um, that I'm anticipating next year. Um, and then perhaps retirement. I still haven't heard anything about that yet. So, so that might be as much as three. That, that's what I have.
I just wanna point out, we have, um, seven more minutes allotted for this portion.
It'll be interesting again to see, um, the presentation next, next week. And I think we owe it to everybody to listen to that and then maybe we can ask some additional questions, um, at that point.
Is, um, and I know, uh, you were, um, Jennifer, a question came about parent feedback as well, about the parent experience of the co-taught model. Have we done a temperature read there for parents who've gone through besides anecdotal feedback?
Um, we talked about that today, uh, and we weren't sure. We weren't sure, frankly, uh, we talked about it as a team and we weren't sure exactly what questions to, uh, to ask that would get us meaningful data. Um, we can go, but we're meeting again on Friday. We can go back and revisit that and send that out.
I think that would be helpful, cause I know, um, it's just a different lens, different experience. And again, I think it's a, I personally think it's a great model. I think it's the, the right inclusive, having push-in services versus pull-out. Um, I think those are all the right approaches. Um, I think having context about what staff were reducing through attrition versus, you know, actual reduction in body is helpful to also clarify. So.
So in a way, we're saying, we're, we're sort of discounting the paras because we're saying that they're not as essential as we originally said, because if we're losing them through attrition, that's okay. So it sort of doesn't sound right to me, that either the positions are important or they're not.
I think the positions are important. I think it's two point, but one is about a layoff, which the impact of what that, it's actually, um, you know, in current, in the current environment, what that also, it has additional significance to it.
Yes, and I can tell you that we've had some, I had some very difficult conversations this week with staff members, um, where I had to give them that news. And from a person who has to deliver that, um, it is incredibly challenging. And yet at the same time, we have an obligation to the system to make sure that we are keeping it financially solvent.
Um, and then just my, my only other lingering thought would be preparing for, for, again, we've never gone through a pandemic and what our kids are gonna be coming back to, um, in general is just the concern.
Yeah, and you know, along with that, just to throw it in is, um, I don't know if folks saw that Ken had sent an article where California is thinking about how they might go back to school and we have no idea where we're gonna be by then. But, um, I think that is one of the things he wants to talk about in ThinkCom. And that may be additional. Like, we have no idea how school is going to be structured at that point and where we're gonna be at. There will be a lot of different things potentially to consider that could have a real impact on budget.
If I, if I could please ask, um, our, our, our school leaders are creating, um, reopening committees with their teachers and teams to design plans for, uh, three potential scenarios. And I would, I would please ask that, um, you allow us time to do that work. Um, and, and adjust because I think we have a sense of what educational programming could look like in any of those three scenarios.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
So, um, Jennifer, do you wanna talk about the next, the special education piece? Or do we wanna wait until?
No, I can talk about that. So that is a, um, that was a change of a staff member position. And this goes to the question Natasha asked about the rising, uh, need for, or the need for, uh, the rising third graders. Um, Carol Gayhan, Chris Kitchell and Patty Tuhey are looking at, and I alluded to this earlier, how we can use the skill set of our staff, um, and be able to provide, um, higher for a skill set that is needed in order to meet those students' needs. Um, and what we're hoping to do is to get a win-win for, um, our students, our rising fourth graders who, who need some support, uh, for some of our students who are currently at Fowler within a particular program, um, who, uh, we need some additional support for, and then additional literacy support at the, um, Green Meadow School. I don't wanna go into too much more detail there, uh, because again, these are, these are conversations that we're having with staff members. But rest assured, that position is being filled and it's being filled with, um, a, a, uh, skill set that will meet the needs that we have for our students.
How does the literacy-based program fit into that? But, cause I said Fowler.
It is at Fowler and I, I'd really like to continue the conversations internally, um, and have some better answers for you, um, about that. That's, that's, that's a question that we've, um, we've been asking.
Okay. I would love to hear about that as well. If I could at some point be part of that, that'd be great.
Sure.
Again, we're having very beginning conversations, looking at our students and their needs and that type of thing.
Yeah, no, no, I know that's been a, a new thing for us. So I'd be interested to hear, where you're talking about the co-taught and this profile of kids. I'm trying to figure out how that marries with that, that as well. All right.
We have to have a diverse set of, of programs to meet our diverse student needs. And I think what you can be very proud of is that we, um, with some of the things we're considering, I think we will, um, we will have made, and this is a credit to the Special Education Department specifically, um, some incredible strides to be able to have a diverse set of programming for our elementary and middle school students.
Um, okay, so then, um, we've got the, um, we have Trish Damas, um, PE teacher, phys ed teacher retiring. And we did have the wellness class at Green Meadow. So the wellness teacher is moving up to high school?
Um, so not speaking specifically, cause we haven't landed on where people will go, but that person is being provided an opportunity to work in a different building in the district.
Correct. So where, where do we, um, so that's a, a saving, um, cause at Green Meadow, where does that, where are we, what are we doing with that salary? That, and where are we shifting that to?
That was part of, I, I mean, so there's not a one-to-one correlation between all.
No, but I'm just wondering where that went to.
So all of the reductions, um, from, uh, the, you know, the two positions at Green Meadow, uh, to some of the savings in regards to the retirements, um, allowed for the reallocation to some other programming. Um, you know, the increased cost for the computer science program, um, I don't have that sheet in front of me, but I.
Engineering, the engineering program.
The engineering program is basically wash.
That's, that's what I was trying to understand also is that we, we're, we're the special, the special, uh, Spanish teacher sliding into, um, over. So that's a, her special is not happening. So I'm just, well, that's two full-time, that's two FTEs there.
Guidance positions.
We have an increase in the guidance position. We have an increase in the computer science position. But I guess, I guess you could say those two positions took those two, you know.
Yeah.
That's where.
Not apples to apples, but I got it.
Then there was reducing of the world language at grade, uh, K through five. So now that we're not gonna have the world language, um, that, um, Spanish teacher is going down to teach grade one, um, Spanish immersion because that teacher is, is leaving, correct?
Well, that she's being offered that position. We haven't, we don't have signed contracts, but that's, excuse me, is being offered.
And just for public, this might be the first time some public are hearing the grade one, uh, Spanish immersion teacher, she's returning home, correct? So I just wanna make sure the context that the public is understanding what that means.
Yes, she has, she has decided for her family, um, she just had a new baby and, um, we're very happy for her and she has decided to return to Spain.
Yeah.
All right, and then we just have, um, you know, one more, one more position, um, that is potentially being discussed to be, um, reduced. I'm not sure if we can say that one right now.
Um, sorry, hold on.
Um, before you jump into, to that, I wonder the, the music, um, programming. Is everything now gonna be, um, during the day, not outside of the day? Okay. So that we were able to, to do that, which is great. I think that's.
That's a lot of, yeah, ninja-ing with the schedule.
Yeah, yeah. And so fourth through six will have band and instrumentals during the day as part of their day. And seventh and eighth will have band, um, and nothing will be before or after school.
I mean, we will have chorus, uh, well, actually, I don't know if chorus is, uh, we have to work in trying to find someone to do that. Um, strings will continue to be after school. I can't remember what else, but yes, so we do have, um, we, we will have programming after school.
No, nothing in the morning. I know that was equity.
No, no morning, nothing in, nothing in the morning.
Well, the afternoon is, it can be equity as well, but, yeah, we won't have anything in the morning.
But a, and as far as the music itself, so all, all of our kids from K up through what grade have actual general music during the course of the day?
Um, I believe in order to make the instrumentals in the barrier and program work, it's K through four.
Okay.
So, uh, so five is, and, uh, will they have band and instrumentals?
If, if that is.
That's what they want.
Elects to that, yep.
And you just said that strings is gonna be an after-school program?
I believe so. Um, we initially had it, uh, budgeted for the person to be able to do before school and then teach a class. Um, unfortunately, I don't know that we're gonna be able to shift this schedule for the class that we need taught in order to offer the instrumentals. So we will need to find an instructor for an after-school, um, component similar to the chorus. And so we are working through that.
Okay.
It may become a program, um, like the chorus was through the Excel, um, or FASC model. My son is very disappointed about, he wanna do cello next year.
That's big.
Yeah.
It is.
I thought the sax, lugging the saxophone around was, was mighty for a fourth grader doing the cello, yikes.
We'll see, we'll see what he decides.
That spells out all of the population to get us to where we are now. Hopefully it's a little bit, you know, easier, yeah, more, uh, easier to understand.
Yeah, and it looks like, so the other part too, we're talking about the, um, the stipend, the athletic stipend. That is, um, one of the other things that was originally in the budget. But I know there was questions about, um, not pursuing that. The status quo.
I would strongly recommend that if we're getting the guidance that our budget is going to be, that we should move our budget forward as planned. Um, that that twelve-thousand-dollar allocation will allow us to address one of the concerns from the Student Opportunity Act survey of assisting teachers in implementing high-quality curriculum. Uh, this was not something that was of a high priority, but it certainly was noted, um, in the comments, um, to support students through social, emotional. Um, to support students through social emotional challenges and to be able to have additional administrative support. Uh, to work with the guidance counselors and to provide supervision and evaluation to our staff. I, I think it's, it's short money for a long gain.
It's money though, so I mean, it's um, I, I, I would say that I, I, I hear what you're saying. And I think that we're also hearing different feedback that we need to reassess um, in many ways. And um, I think that is one of the areas that I, I strongly would like as a school committee that we, we would reassess. Um, expanding um, that piece, um, considering where we are right now.
I, I, I just think that, as Jennifer said, you're, we're not. I guess we have to understand that we're not decreasing the budget, so I mean, having that $12,000 to give to somebody else, what, where are we going to do with that? You know, we have to have a plan, we can't have just extra $12,000 in the coffers.
No, I think we decrease the budget, right? I think that's where we, I think last week, maybe this is my different understanding, last week, the school committee had. Spoken about options where we should be looking to pull back. And I think that's what I was expecting to hear a little bit more about. And so I think what's coming out of the conversation is that you're saying, we're not going to do that.
I don't think we have any data from folks at the state level, from the town administration. Indicating that there is a, a need to drastically reduce our services and programming for next year. I do think that we're going to have to plan for it in FY22 and 23, big time. Um, but we are not hearing, and, and Irene, maybe you want to talk about some of the things that um, you did some analysis on. But you know, nothing that I am hearing is, is indicating that we need to have drastic budget cuts. Um, in order to open our doors next year. The only two budgetary position, the only two cuts that we had for budgetary reasons were the Green Meadow principal and one custodial position.
Yeah, hoping that, and the, the direction that we are getting from the state is to move forward, you know, with your budgets. Uh, with whatever feedback you get from the town, which was, yeah, please reduce another 150, which we did. And so the budget presented was one that they should be able to fund. We will have some savings, um, you know, because of the closure. Not as much as people would necessarily think or want, but there will be savings. We can use that money by um, pushing some things that were normally funded, uh, primarily in Circuit Breaker, back into the general fund. That will then give us a cushion in the Circuit Breaker account, so that if we, and this was the biggest if for next year. If Circuit Breaker reimbursement comes in lower than originally planned, we will now be able to. Um, we hope, based on today's information, and as we all know, this changes every day. But at this moment, we would most likely be able to cover um, some reduction. Um, in the Circuit Breaker funding, if that was to happen. Uh, and again, I am hedging my bets very much here because I don't have a crystal ball. But I can tell you that between reductions in transportation costs, both regular and sped. Uh, some reductions in utilities, Natasha, just a quick nod to you, you were asking about the utility bills. How is that one bill looked, 10,000 for electric, yes, that does represent a lower bill than we normally would have. Um, keep in mind that when the buildings are turned off, or are locked, they are not turned off. Your HVAC systems are running 24/7, this is not like your furnace at home. So those fans and those motors have to run 24/7, so does your security system. Okay, one of the least costly parts of the um, building is the lighting. Even though we have just completed the LED system, which will help save us some money. Um, but there's an awful lot of stuff that is running even in a locked, unoccupied building. Uh, Fowler expenses remained high because for two weeks we were still running food service. Uh, we were doing the grab and go, and we did keep, you know, central offices open. And anyone who needed to do work was coming to Fowler to do their work, because that was the only building you could get into.
So I think that um, I mean, again, I, reiterating, hearing what I heard at the, the tri board meeting. And also knowing that, I mean, the governor is revisiting his budget for the state. Um, I, I think that um, the status quo on the admin level. Um, I don't think that that should be expanded at the high school, I think it should remain the 1.5. FTE, uh, we don't have the Chinese, uh, the Beijing students aren't coming. Um, we don't even know if we're going to have uh, fall sports potentially. Um, and, and so those are considered, those are things that we, I've heard talks about. And I think there's more reason not to do it than there are to do it. And so with that in mind, I think it would should be, um, that would be my, my suggestion.
Yeah, I was going to ask about the stipend, um, if we have, if we do allocate the stipend to somebody and then we don't have. Um, school sports, what happens? Do we still have to pay stipends?
It depends on when that decision is made, because um, scheduling for sports. Starts way before the season does, because you have to find coaches, you have to sign contracts with the coaches. They have to contact students, the students have to turn in all their physical forms, you have to collect activity fees. Um, and then you're working with people called assigners, they're the ones who actually schedule the games and all of the referees. So there's an awful lot of stuff that has to happen before it starts. So, again, it depends, it depends on when they make the call. And what happened with the spring season was they literally made the call less than 10 days before the shortened season was going to start. Okay, and you have to be working with the MIAA, you have to be working in our case with the Midland-Watson League. Uh, that's at least for, they go for the spring sports, I'm assuming it's the same for fall and winter, that's where we play. Uh, so there's an awful lot of work that gets done, um, again, before a single sport even starts for the year.
Yeah, I would like to see that revisited when we talk about the eighth grade going there. Um, I think that genuinely demonstrates a need for two FTEs at the high school.
So I want to point out that we're um, 12 minutes over on this item now. I know this is big week, but just to let you know where we're at.
I, I just have to say, the athletic director is not an administrator. So I just need.
You're, you're increasing the, to the, that leadership to, to FTEs, right?
But you're changing his salary, you're basically.
The salaries are changing.
Yeah, the stipend, you're adding a stipend for additional, um, you're not needing to allocate stipend, right? Yes, that work.
Basically, it costs us an extra $12,000. I for one would like to still go down the same route that we had pre-planned. Um, because it is so important to have two FTEs, obviously, I mean, we're really. We're trying our best to even do one at Green Meadow, and the high school is our flagship. And there are just so many reasons to have, we've short-sighted that, that school for too long. Um, and I really believe that we need to head down. I, I definitely want to continue the same thought process that we had at the beginning at work then. I agree, it's short money, um, I don't want to be short-sighted, and I think there's a lot more benefit than. To do it versus saving $12,000. And to your point Natasha, we may not even have to pay $12,000 if we don't have sports in the fall, we may save $6,000. And then I'd really be kicking myself.
Well, it, it sounds like they would, they're signing contracts, they would have to, right, is that, did I understand when, when answering Mauro?
I guess it depends on when, when that happens.
You still, you have.
But it's a, it depends on what, what decisions are made when. If we get to August 1, okay, and the state, and we still believe, and we have not been told otherwise, that we are going to have a fall sports season. Then that is the point at which phone calls are being made, coaches are being lined up. And the assigners are starting to plan the season, in fact, football, as far as I know, usually starts practicing in mid- August.
Oh, mid-August, yeah.
Yeah, all, all fall sports start.
Preseason, native preseason.
Yeah, so again, it all depends on when these decisions are made. But yeah, long before we've got any kids in the classroom, if we're having a fall sports season, it has started.
But the stipend itself is, doesn't get paid, you know, 12,000 right off the bat, because.
I think it's paid in two, either two or three installments. He knows, I, I don't know, because I haven't been here long enough, but typically, most of the stipends are paid. Um, in two installments.
Could that be something that we, once we know more, we could then change in, in the, like, as we get to like July? Um, you know, I'd hate to commit to the, the funds.
Visited, okay, but right now, it can always be revisited.
Right, that's what I, that's what I was thinking is that.
To go forward.
Yeah.
I'm wondering if it could be in the contract, if there could be language in the contract. If we have the fall sports, you're getting paid, and if we don't, I mean, it seems like we could put wording in there.
Right, but just to leave it status quo until maybe July, until we know more?
Absolutely. Because you want to be prepared, you want to be able to go forward if that's the decision being made.
Right, and if it doesn't happen, I also don't want to be committing something that we don't need to be.
Yeah, agreed.
I wanted to see if there's anything further on this right now.
Can we just have clarity on, on what we're doing with that FTE position at the high school?
Yeah, I was just going to ask that. So it sounds like we're status quo until maybe July, and then we can revisit uh, when we know more, is that what I understood?
I was, I understood we were doing that only for the um, AD stipend. And that the, uh, that we weren't even discussing the idea of having um, two FTEs for uh, for principals.
I mean, honestly, I can't imagine running a high school with only one and a half FTEs. I mean, one that's there now is doing a full-time job now. To say that he's doing it half, you know, a point five would be, is ludicrous, to be honest with you.
Yeah, no, that's not what's happening.
I mean, Green Meadow ran that way for quite a long time.
I don't know of any high school that doesn't have two administrators.
Do we want to ask Brian to weigh it, weigh in? Sorry, are we trying to consider whether or not we'd have two administrators at the high school?
I think we're considering whether the position would be of one, a point five principal, a point five athletic director, or a 1.0 principal.
Oh, I don't think 1.0 principal, no, I don't think that's, I didn't hear that. I'm just, status quo is, right now it's 1.5 with point five athletic director. And I think that's what I understood, was that once we hear more, if we need to amend that in July to. And then push the stipend out, then that would be when we know more, if there's even going to have fall sports.
Right, but what's in the, in the proposal right now is that it would be two.
Right.
Principal.
Current budget is for two principals.
And he's the 10-month, he's the 10-month position.
Correct.
Yes, so, um, so that's the way it should continue. Unless we, and then we revisit the stipends, was my understanding, the way that we had talked about it originally.
That's, yeah, no, I'm, I would, I would say keep the 1.5 FTE at the high school.
Vote on?
Yeah. Can you even do, oh, yeah, whatever, I, I.
So is this something we need to discuss further later? I feel like.
I mean, I think the, the way the contract is, I think that's as it relates to this contract. I think that would be one of the contracts that needs to be amended, and, and so, um, because.
But, but the cut, the um, budget has already been voted on.
Right.
So I don't think, I don't think you can, you can take a vote on an individual item within the budget.
Um, we voted on the total dollar, we did not vote on the allocation of um.
Right, but I don't think school committee votes on individual.
That's not your, yeah, the school committee doesn't. We can give recommendations.
Budget or does not.
Yeah, we can give recommendations to how we, yes. And so I think we can vote on a recommendation.
I wouldn't be prepared to do that tonight, I'm sorry. I don't, I, this is all news to me, and I don't think it's fair to try to have a discussion about that tonight. I thought we were going with 2.0, that was, has been in the proposal, um, so I guess I'm confused.
Oh, I, I was looking at the, the feed, the comments, and that was one of the things, is that we're remaining.
That was, right, that was something.
It wasn't, yeah, it was in the notes, that's why, I, I was talking about it, so.
Yeah, no, and I, I'm, I'm not questioning why, it's just for me, the idea of actually trying to switch it back and have a vote on switching it back. And that's news to me, and I'm not prepared to do that without, and having more data. I, I think that's a big decision, a big decision at this point. Seeing what happened when we, I, we, we did that at Fowler, when we cut back at Fowler, and it was awful. So I, I have to say, we got burned doing that, and it's, it does not support students, from what I've seen. Um, so I'd like.
Wait, I think, ma'am, confused, it's not cutting back, it's just what it is happening this year to continue.
Next year, how it is this year. Yeah, but I, I think that what we've been doing is, is not giving that attention. The data suggests, in my opinion, that what's been happening has been actually trying to slide by with something that wasn't. Has been not working the way it needed to, and we've been hearing that. So that's why I don't feel like, without laying that out better and having a fuller conversation, I don't think that there is like a real reason behind the decision. To move to the 2.0.
Right, I think when we got presented the budget, one of the things we got presented was that, because we were also, uh, and this we voted on. That we would have the Chinese, the Beijing school students coming in there, and that's how it was originally framed to us. That was where the district was exploring.
Saying is, I'm not ready to have that conversation tonight, like, that wasn't what we talked about voting on, so.
And just one comment, if, and again, it goes back to ancient history, but if I remember correctly, it was meant to be. A temporary situation when we were going through a really difficult financial time. And it was only that one point, you know, the um, half and half was, was just intended to be a short term. But unfortunately, it became the norm, so we need to go back to where it was meant to be, the full-time.
Well, yeah, I'm sorry, so I'm not, I'm not saying we don't have this longer discussion, because I see people are still saying their points. I'm not saying one way or the other right now, I don't feel prepared to be able to vote. So if you're going to ask me to vote tonight, um, I just don't feel prepared. Like, I don't have enough information to be able to consider, like, well, maybe, why would we stay at 1.5, what does that mean? What's that mean for students, what does that mean for, what's been happening to the Maynard High School over the last five years? And what we've heard from teachers, and what we've heard from, so like, I just don't feel prepared to do that, if that's what you're saying we should be voting on.
The only other thing that was outstanding, I think, was the um, salary freezes. And that seemed timely, which we hadn't talked about, which I thought we needed to do today. Is that a discussion that we should be having right now?
Salary freeze.
For admin, for admin salary freezes? Yeah.
Oh, salary freezes, I thought you said phrases for some reason. No, no, that was me, I'm sorry.
I mean, again, we have not been told to, to decrease our budget, so I, I just don't, to what end, I, you know. We have been told that things will be changing, alright, I, I think that's remiss to not acknowledge that. So um, I mean, I think aligning the different structures, the 10-month, 12-month. Um, is one piece that makes, makes sense. Um, and then also, I think um, in consideration that uh, we know things are on the horizon. I think proceeding, I feel like we're just ignoring what the inevitable, and I, I don't agree with that approach at all. You know, you give people raises and then later on you may have to cut later on, I don't think there's.
I, I guess I would ask what, where we're hearing, where, you know, what are, what are you hearing, or where are you hearing from? That we are going to see mid-year cuts um, for next year. I know there's a lot of conjecture, there's a lot of fear, um, but I go back to the, the guidance that is being given from the state. From the people who are creating these budgets, uh, from the town, who are creating these budgets, that as of now, next year.
I've heard it from the town.
Well, the town has told the school department to move forward with the budget as we have established it. Um, so I, I, you know, I, I think it's important that we use that. I fully expect that we will have some very difficult conversations for FY22 and 23. I, I would strongly recommend that we not make decisions on um, reductions. Out of hypothesis of what might be, that will have drastic impact on programming and could potentially create. Um, a, a fear of uh, reduced uh, programming at Maynard Public Schools and increase our costs elsewhere. We are.
Salary freezes are, are impacting programming for admin, right? I, I think what's, I'm talking about salary freezes, not programming changes.
You could, you could save $17,000, right Irene, if we froze all of the administrative salaries?
Or less, I'd have to, I'd have to redo it. Now that, now that I'm a person at, at Green Meadow, but it's, it's very small. Now that, now that I'm a person at, at Green Meadow, but it's, it's very small.
Right, I thought Brian had a really good point, um, which is, you know, we're asking the admins and the staff to do incredible things right now, and the morale versus the short amount of money. And I, for one, do not want to shoot from the hip. I want to do it once, right, I don't want to make cuts now and then have to make cuts later. I'd like to see the full picture and, and do the right program changes, and make the right cuts when we know more. And, and what we're getting from, I know Mike Guzzo, I mean, everybody's saying the same thing that Jennifer is, which is, it's not this coming year, it's the following year, is when we're really gonna have to really make some serious changes.
Right, I know the funding from the CARES Act is only through FY twenty-one, and so after that, you know, is unknown. I, I get that, um, I just, um, you know.
Your admin, your admin salary freezes, given the fact that there's only five positions that are continuing positions, okay, would be ten thousand dollars. Because everybody else is, so it's not, it's not a raise.
Well, you have the, also the, um, isn't there built-in professional development reimbursement, um, within the different contracts as well, that are, um, vary for different rates?
It's approximately twenty-five hundred dollars per person.
I have fifty-eight hundred, actually.
Which is.
So what are you gonna do, tell, to tell, to tell all of your admin to do no PD for the entire year?
No, I don't, I, I didn't suggest that. Just thinking about how we, again, these are options that I was hoping we talked about in the budget subcommittee meeting.
We did talk about them, and it, the, they were discussed, and I won't share what Lydia and Mary, their perceptions, they can share them.
Well, I told you what mine is.
Yeah, and you, and you know what mine is, so.
So I, I know that, just from what I heard in the tri-board meeting, um, that I know both of them were at, and, um, Justine, um, did put Greg on the spot, and he did not, uh, attribute anything to any immediate facts, but he did acknowledge that it's on the horizon. And so I think, um, knowing that, knowing the communications we've recently received, I think it's remiss to not, um, take any action. Um, and I feel like that's what we're.
We won't have a clear picture until June thirtieth, so that's why he said to proceed now. But I got a very strong sense that there were potential additional cuts coming.
Right, and so, right now, we, once, once these contracts are May first, you have to give notice, um, they extend. So that's, I don't, we could wait, that'd be great, I don't know if that, if we're allowed that luxury. The, I, the budget, I guess in order to make cuts, significant cuts, it's not gonna come from, you know, admin freezes or the AD, it's gonna have to be programmatic. I mean, if you want to see significant cuts, I can't imagine that it would just be twenty-four thousand dollars. I mean, to me, if you're gonna make cuts, they're gonna have to be programmatic, and, and that becomes the bigger issue here, you know? Right. Twenty-five thousand dollars. But it would be something.
And, and you've got a twenty-two million dollar budget.
Sorry, say that again, Irene, and then Lydia.
It's twenty-four thousand on a twenty-two million dollar budget.
Right.
Lydia?
I just feel like we need to be making good faith efforts, um, in, in, in respect to the town, um, where we can. Given what they are considering doing, I, I think that, um.
Do we want to hear from Brian and his thoughts on this? I don't know if that's.
Well, I asked that a while ago, nobody said anything.
All right, there's been a lot of things happening, Lydia. Would you like us to consider that, what would you like to do?
Ask Brian.
I'd like to hear what Brian says.
And I'm sorry if you were, felt ignored earlier, Lydia, I didn't mean to do that. Um, I don't think I can unmute Colleen, I keep trying, and then it doesn't work, so.
Can I just ask, in terms of procedure, you had said, Beth Lynn, that public comment would only be taken by email, and I just want to make sure that by allowing someone to speak, that, um, you're not opening sort of a different procedural component? Now, I, and I would love to hear what Brian has to say, I just want, you know, there's a lot of other people on the line that may want to speak as well, if, if that's something that we're doing.
Yeah, I guess that, um, the thinking is that Brian will be at the helm at the time that, um, these, and he has been in a lot of these subcommittee meetings, so, um.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, I just.
Yeah, that's why, I appreciate your bringing that up. So that's why we would allow for him to speak, to share, given that, um, it just seems, so, for people to understand, I do have, I have seen there have been some several citizens' comments that have come through, so I will be reading those in just a few minutes, as soon as we're done with we, um, this agenda item. So, um, with that in mind, without objection from other committee members, I would, um, uh, allow for Brian as incoming superintendent to.
I am trying. Thanks, I appreciate that, so it's a great discussion you're having, lots of important topics. The most recent that I've just been listening to was the discussion around admin salaries, right? And I think I have spoken to some of you, and I know we talked at the budget subcommittee, which you've just paraphrased, but I would concur that for this short amount of money, um, that's not really gonna equate to a large savings. And I agree that we are asking teachers and administrators to do a gigantic amount of work in this, and probably somewhat over the summer, and opening school next year, we have no idea what that's even gonna look like. Do I think this is the time to say, you, you know, we want to reduce and give you no raise at all? Um, I think that would be a hard sell unless it was absolutely necessary. And from the conversations that I've been part of with Mary Jane, and Jennifer, and several of the other members on the budget subcommittee, we're not at that point yet. We could end up there in a year or two, um, anything's possible, and Irene, I didn't mean to leave you out, Irene, it doesn't seem like we're at that draconian stage at this point, that we want to still build the morale, build the programming, give everybody a reason to stay, and give people a reason to come. Um, and, you know, that would be what I've been thinking and hearing, um, in the conversations that I've been part of lately, in the last week or two with the, all the folks from Maynard.
Thank you, Brian.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes, thank you.
So, um, we are at the point with the, this where we can, there is conversation, if anyone, there's anything we, someone felt like they wanted to make a motion to vote upon at this point, we could, we could consider revisiting things next, next time we meet that we want to revisit.
Are we gonna have an executive session?
Next week, yeah, I don't see why we, it seems like that's the thing to do before the meeting, yeah.
I feel like we need to have an emergency one tom, like tomorrow.
Forty-eight hours.
Post it, we can't.
I know, but there aren't even provisions for, like, emergency executive session?
There are, you're supposed to post it in twenty, it's within, you're supposed to post it in forty-eight hours with your recently forced E. If something comes up and you need to do it unexpectedly, then you post as soon as you can.
What would be the purpose of a, an emergency executive session?
I just feel like we still, there, there's too much disagreement over the contracts and, and whatnot, that, decisions that need to be made by May first, and that's Friday, and we have.
Okay.
No time.
Okay. So, we could look at doing an emergency executive session.
But, I mean, that's only if everyone else is in agreement. If I'm the only one feeling this way, then it doesn't make sense to do it, because I'm just gonna be talking to myself.
I think there are some unresolved things, I mean, I thought, you know, from where we were last week to why we had to meet today, um, seemed that there were time-sensitive things that we needed to make, take action on. Um, and so it just seems that what I'm hearing is, no, we're not gonna do that. Um, so, it's a little bit different tone of the conversation.
Yeah, I guess I hear that we have to follow where we are right now, and the guidance that we're getting now.
Oh, the guidance that, um, yeah, but the school committee is in charge of the budget. But you're not in charge of personnel, so that, that becomes. No, but we can vote on recommendations. Right, but. Which we've done before, um, on things that, when it comes to.
Natasha, Natasha, what I think it comes down to is, we can recommend all we want, but it doesn't necessarily mean it's gonna be followed up on.
Yeah, and that could be.
So given that, why don't you take a vote to, to put your, your position out? And that way, the administration has your recommendation, and it's been on.
I've already done it several times.
I, I hear you.
To, if anyone wanted to make a motion to vote on that, you, you could, that's up to you, any individual member.
I'm all set.
So do, then are we saying that we also wouldn't have the emergency executive session? People share what they feel for recommendations, and we move forward from there? Okay.
So, um, are the contracts going to align, uh, for the ten-month and twelve-month at least? Or? They're already, they're already been take, they're already ten-month, or, we have two ten-month principals and three CIA principals. That is all set. I will get the contracts up before Friday for them.
I had a question about the positions themselves, and whether or not we're moving away from the dual principal model, and going back to the principal vice principal?
Not at this, not at this.
Okay.
You know, I've had discussions with Brian already, and it's something that they'll talk about next year.
Anything else on this agenda item? I appreciate everyone for being in on this conversation. Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. All right, we are now going to move into citizens' comment. And I, um, have received three in my inbox, I'm going to read them in the order that I received them. So just for everyone to be aware, um, if you're joining now, we, um, uh, when we move to a remote meeting, people can send, uh, citizens' comment to bhuilhan@maynard.k12.ma.us. They get read, and then, um, they will, if there's something to follow up upon, then they'll be considered. We aren't at this point, um, answering particular questions, or we're just, I literally am just reading out the comments. And then, even meeting so often, that we're often able to then return anything we need to the next week as well. Um, follow-up can occur, um, also behind the scenes, so please know that, that we're hearing in each and every comment, and looking for ways that we are addressing them, um, despite the fact that you're not gonna hear, uh, a particular response tonight. Um, unless there's something to clarify, like misinformation, that's something that, that was, want to make sure we do that. Um, that's a quick fix, like, there were, it's ten thousand dollars versus a hundred thousand, I didn't hear that right, you know? We've responded to that, but just so everyone's aware of what we've been doing right now. Um, and, um, so I'm gonna go in and just start with the one that I have here. All right, let me just make sure that I didn't, oh, I'm sorry, I got, uh, let me go back and do this first. All right, so, a few questions, and, and also just for people to be aware, because they're citizens' comments, we do say names, if there's someone that wanted to make a comment that they just wanted to share anonymously, we, we, we take those and we could pass them along too. So, don't feel like you, you couldn't say something if you don't feel like you want to be identified. You could share feedback, but we just want to read that out loud, um, because obviously, in a public setting, you would be up front in a microphone, so, so we're trying to mirror that. So this is from Jessica Clark, she says, "A few questions I hope can be answered tonight. How does an increase in literacy PD translate to accomplishing the survey results stating GM literacy programs should be improved? What literacy experts are we consulting with to choose PD to provide? Uh, second bullet, in regards to the K sizes and teacher reductions, have you taken into account the new apartment residents in addition to new homeowner registrations?" Uh, bullet three.
Beth, can you repeat that part, I didn't hear you.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, you guys, if you don't hear something, please let me know. In regards to the K sizes and teacher reductions, have you taken into account the new apartment residents in addition to new homeowner, owner registrations? Uh, and, I don't know, that seems like it could be a quick answer, is that a quick answer, or should we?
In, in, looking at the class sizes, we're looking at actuals, and we use the five-year trend.
Okay. Um, so it's, right now, it's not, I know they did projections on new apartment residents as part of that design, so.
Forty-four kids were gonna be in the whole, the whole development, which wasn't very realistic at the time, but.
Yeah, okay. Um, bullet three, "I would strongly urge you to take into account the social-emotional needs in addition to academic needs are going to be drastically increased in the fall due to our current situation. Every grade level has lost significant learning opportunities in addition to peer interaction. To cut a kindergarten teacher is so short-sighted. You have pre-K children who have lost their last months of schooling, if they were attending pre-K at all. You're going to see increased separation anxiety, significant regression in skills, social skill aggression, et cetera. I would also like to highlight the kindergarten dyslexia screening, which is state law, and going to identify children much earlier who need additional support in literacy. With literacy already being identified by the community as in need of additional support, cutting a teacher will only lead to short-term gain for long-term deficit." And bullet point four, "Please clarify what is being discussed in regards to the literacy-based programs at Fowler and GM." So I don't know, that's something that can be clarified quickly, I think we were talking about.
No, I don't have any additional information, because we're in the early stages of looking at that.
Yeah, that's what I thought you.
That could be like a CPAC conversation too, since it's programming.
Sure.
All right, so also just for everyone to be aware, I will forward these all, they all came in during the meeting. Um, so I'll forward them to you, whenever I get them beforehand, I always forward them, everyone's safe, you can see ahead of time. Um, all right, so next is Elizabeth Barron. She says, "Just listening to the meeting now, and wondering about co-teaching at Fowler. It sounds like there is only two teachers in the class when there are several, several children on IEPs in a class who do not need a one-to-one para, is this the case?"
Yes.
"It should be a consideration that next year there will be a need in every class for extra staff. It would better, be better to have teachers already familiar rather than hiring new ones. I would think that the first few weeks would be a gauge where it would start to be apparent whether extra staffing is needed or if enrollment declines. It is much easier to let staff go, I think it says stuff, but I think staff is what you meant, to let staff go than find new qualified staff in a timely manner, just something to think about. Thank you." And then the last one that I have is Bonnie Wilson. Uh, there was, so she says her first comment is, "Lovely delivery from the Friends of Maynard seniors to the class of twenty-twenty seniors today. Each senior receives a Maynard Opale game." That's cool. Number two, kudos from, number two is music, kudos. Dash, "Remote learning plans for the four-to-12 band students are well thought out and organized by the hour and by grade. For grades eight to twelve, daily warm-ups, face-to-face via screens, sectional work, electronic support through smart music tutorials, and grade-level meeting opportunities are present in the schedule. Weekly slots for music therapy," I just wrote that wrong, I'm sorry. "Weekly slots for music theory, music history, and music performance have also been scheduled. For the youngest learners, grades four through seven, there are ample slots for individual and small group instruction. MHS core students are studying their pieces, listening exercises, and recording sections as they practice. MHS wind and jazz ensembles have been on hold, but teachers are discussing MMA-supported yoga for musicians in support with master classes for further enrichment." Thank you for that, Bonnie, and then budget comment. "Would you like to have more conversation about consistency across wind, jazz, strings, chorus offerings as ensembles? After-school, wind, jazz at Fowler and MHS have historically been part of activity fees. Ideally, offering strings, chorus, ensembles in the same way would be more consistent. Chores have been offered through BAFC and FAL in the past due to chorus being cut from the daytime schedule, but for a fee charged to parents, some consistency would be helpful, helpful when promoting music offerings to families. Thanks, Bonnie." All right. So then let me just go back and then Jessica sent another asking about making responses public once answered versus just responding to the individual person. Last in a public forum. I think once we have more sense of the answers to some of those questions, they would end up being shared out in any case. Is that correct?
Who you asking? Sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I guess.
I thought we weren't answering anything. So, yeah.
We are not. Yes. Yeah.
Well, can take a look at everything.
Yeah. And just to be clear in general, we are, yeah, we'll send it all, send it all onto you. It becomes part of the, the citizens comments. They go to Colleen to be part, become part of the public record as well. All right. So that's it for that. I'm going to move on then to the next agenda item, which is pre-K tuition. And that's number seven. And also I'm trying to remember to point people to the folder. There's a few items in your folder about preschool and as information. What's on the table is for us to consider now that we are, know that school will be closed for the rest of the year. We already had voted upon reducing tuition as a school reimbursement letter, preschool reimbursement letter had gone out to preschool families, talking about, says, since we are not able to provide the full range of activities included in the usual program, we have reduced the tuition for April by 50%. And then it had options for people who had paid versus hadn't paid yet and what they were going to do. And then the, you always had the, you had the option to be able to unenroll. And then there was also, it also said, if your family is suffering severe financial disruption due to the COVID-19 situation, they offered a application to submit to receive, see if you're eligible for preschool waiver. So that's what we had voted upon and was subsequently sent out to families for the month of April, knowing that we would have to wait and see what happened beyond May 4th. And now we know that we're closed for the rest of the year. And so on the table is trying to decide what we will do for preschool tuition reimbursements for the rest of the year.
Okay. I put four options together. If you're going to take a look at that. I've got, I, I've gotten a couple of people who wanted to unenroll. Then I had another email that said, you know, they're willing to support the, the district because they knew that those, that, that preschool tuition pays for the teachers. However, you know, some parents still have to find daycare. So they're still paying for daycare on top of that. So that person perhaps said, could we reduce it a little bit? So that was one. And then another person said, you know, wanted to know, you know, how my, how do I, what's going to happen for the rest of the year? So I can adjust my, my pay accordingly. So, so I'm getting some positive, some negative, but I, you know, I think it is a financial burden for some. And I did ask Jeannie if anybody else applied for financial hardships and she didn't have that information at that point. So I put a few options together. Again, it's across everywhere, some across the state, some people are not charging at all. Some people are making people continue to pay and just all we, all of these options talk about the option to unenroll, which leads me to the next question. If we're going to unenroll, at what point do they get their money back from the day of unenrollment or do we go to April? So these are a couple of other things we put in line. So, you know, a couple of options. One is refund anyone from April to May, April to June at 50%. And then charge 50% of tuition for the remaining families. Refund 100% from March 16th to March 30th. And then you're charged 50% from April to June. Option three is to continue remote learning, charge no tuition. And then option four is full payment if the students are participating in remote learning. Those are the options that came up. I couldn't think of another one unless somebody has, you know, again, somebody said maybe 25%. But, you know, at that point, you know, I just didn't, I didn't put that in there.
Thank you for putting those together.
Yep. Mary Jane, how, the, what we voted on the last time, what, what, I don't, I think it was not last week, the week before, was basically option two.
Uh, hang on.
Other than, other than the fact that it was going to June, it was just through.
No, we voted on pretty much, well, we didn't vote on any of these. Really, it was just charging 50% from March to to, to May 4th. That's what we voted on. And then after May 4th, we were going to make a determination. Is that correct? I think that's what we decided.
And then that were, whose parents were coming into a financial hardship could apply for zero tuition.
Yeah, we did refund anybody 100%. So the option two is not, it's not something we talked about. I just put that.
Okay.
Mary Jane, the regardless of what we decide to do, the staff are still going to be paid, correct?
Absolutely. And that's could be worth some of the CARES Act money comes in, Natasha.
Right. You know, that was, yeah, I was thinking about, since we had our, our last discussion about it. I know there's some equity piece where different teachers are having a different style of how they're engaging. And it's, it's since then, and I know that they are, but it's at different levels. It's hard to reconcile. You're charging the same tuition where one child might be getting 30 minutes or whatever it is for a week of, and, and another child might be different. And that's been hard for me to kind of, you know, if you're, again, we're not changing the tuition based on the amount of time that they're, you know, being engaged with, with, with their class.
No, right. Charging on the tuition rate.
Right. Have you gotten feedback along that line as well about just the different classes are doing, like from up at the preschool level, that that's, you're seeing that?
I myself have not, so I don't know if Jennifer has. I have not heard a lot of, a lot of feedback, a little bit here and there, but nothing. I have not heard personally, no.
We did ask the survey question, so we can disaggregate by the preschool families. We have over 200 results with mostly narrative feedback. So we have not done that deep dive of that data analysis to disaggregate by the pre-K students.
But we can do that.
What support is the pre, are the pre-K teachers getting to help them? Are they getting the same as, as the other teachers?
Yep. Yes. And the pre-K paras as well. Yep. So you, they have both the teachers and the paras are, you know, should be fully.
They are.
Yeah. The same, they're, they're doing the same thing as people from kindergarten to, to grade 12. So they're, they're, they're employees and they're respected to, to do what everybody else is doing.
Um, I mean, for me, I, I, I would be in more in consideration of, I mean, I also was looking at what FASC was doing, FASC stopped charging, you know, families and they're more of a childcare kind of based scenario where they were still engaging, you know, the staff were still being paid and they were still engaging, but families were not being charged. And I, I think you know, that what we know about preschool, although it is helpful to have it, they can still engage if the, you know, but I think charging because it's not equitable is, is one of the things I would probably consider maybe option three. Because we're, we're paying the teachers anyway. They can still do the remote learning.
Just so you know, the cost of that would be $56,000 in lost, in lost revenue. Now, we can charge that to the CARES Act money.
Okay.
Okay. But that, that is your cost. If we forego tuition for April, May and June, and I'm just considering March a wash. They got what they got. We're just going to leave March alone. If we refund 100% or don't charge 100% of April, May and June, that's $18,880 a month and that's $56,000.
And Irene, what's the total amount from the CARES Act that we can anticipate?
119. Now Irene, when you're talking about $58,000 for revenue, um, is that? Yep. So that doesn't include the, that, that includes the teacher salaries as well, correct? It will include anything. It's revenue. Okay.
That will mean.
We get to say, look, we need $56,000 to put back into our preschool revolving account. We lost that revenue due to COVID-19. If we do not do that, I then have to take that amount of money and put it back into the general fund. Because I can no longer cover that $56,000, whether it was salaries or expenses or combination thereof. I can't have that revolving fund in a negative. So I then have to increase the portion of the preschool expense, you know, that's getting paid by the general fund by $56,000.
That's if we, if we don't charge any tuition.
Correct.
Okay. So, so it'll be half of that if we're charging 50%.
And everybody pays it, correct?
Okay.
So your cost is somewhere between 56,000 and half of 56,000.
And but that's, so that's basically recouped from the CARES Act, you said?
It can be, yes.
Okay. So ultimately as a district, we would not, okay, I'm just thinking.
So if we went and used that 119,000 elsewhere though, what, what are we?
Well, we are, we are limited as to what we can use that 119,000 for. It has to be related to COVID-19 cost. Now, lost revenue is considered a legitimate COVID-19 cost. Okay. So you can recoup lost revenue such as preschool tuition. But no, I can't take that 119,000 and say, oh, I'm going to plug my gap in sped or I'm going to pay for a teacher. That you cannot do that. I can use it to pay for, I'm going to get a itemization from the jan, you know, the custodial staff. What extra money did they spend on cleaning supplies? You know, if any, what extra equipment did they buy? I think they bought one of those electronic gun things. That money could be, you know, charged to the CARES Act funds. We don't have to spend it all by June 30th. I believe we have a full year to spend it. So there, you know, once you get it, you can carry it over. It will be in a grant fund and it can carry over to next year.
So things that we're going to find in the fall, like for instance, if we have to take the temperature of every student as they come in the building or.
Right. Or if we had to supply masks. Right. Absolutely.
Money for that.
Or more cleaning.
Right. More cleaning. Okay. But keep, keep in mind, you know, the amount of money we, we're going to get from this is roughly 119, might be a little bit more, but let's count on 119. Yeah. Yeah. So if you're going to eat up 56,000 of it, you know, immediately from, from loss of revenue, you don't have much left to do anything else with.
Was there, I just want to clarify one thing. Sorry Natasha, then you can go. That our, our vote from the last time around was for the month of April. So we're talking about May and June right now. We already voted for the month of April.
Correct.
Okay.
So I know, but it looked like some of her options were in there to revisit that. I think we voted in anticipation that.
Yeah, that's fair enough.
Yeah. That we would be coming back. Well, mostly I did that because I wasn't sure if people are asking for refunds, at what point are we going back to give refunds? Is it from that date or does it, I mean, I wasn't sure. So that's kind of why I did it that way.
Yeah, no, it's helpful because I think we've also gotten different feedback since, because the remote learning plan has come out, you know, the program, people, the cost to people's pockets is now a little bit more real because it's prolonged the whole rest of the school year.
Yep.
And so people are also more out of work as a result of that.
Regardless of what happens, the preschool teachers are still going to be teaching to the students on the IEPs.
Correct.
Right. So.
Yeah.
Don't pay. Those students don't pay anyway.
Anyway. Right. Exactly. Yeah.
Right. So we're just talking about, and so the option is that they can unenroll on any time anyway, right?
Yep.
And, and so the consideration is, do we, if they do that, are we allowing them to, are we doing a refund retroactive?
That's up to you. I mean, I, they did partake, partake in, in some of the learning, but I.
I guess why would we do that if they've been learning up to this point? I would say restart with a clean slate, May 4th, next Monday.
I think the only reason why I would say that is because people have, the, the engagement has been different from, just like right now in other K through 12. You know, classes, some classes do, you know, different type of engagement. And, and so that is, that's different. It's from an equity perspective. People are paying and they're expecting a certain type of service and, and maybe what they now are realizing they're getting is not what they would anticipate paying tuition for.
I guess I would say then that they could unenroll at this point.
I would also say that, yes, depending on how many comments there are, even if it's only one. I would say we approach either the, the teachers directly or the, the person in charge of them, who I believe is Donna, correct, Mary Jane?
Arden.
We, we approach, Donna is, is in charge of the preschool teachers?
Yes.
Yeah. So we approach her and let her know and have her, you know, quote unquote, solve it, so to speak.
I just want to, in terms of this, we are having, we're getting regular feedback from our families. We are able to disaggregate it. We have a weekly meeting with the Maynard Education Association. I have a weekly meeting with my CIA principals where we review the data and emails and the feedback that we have. So there is, at no point are we not, you know, responding to feedback that we're getting regarding instruction and what things are working. So I just want everyone to know that. Additionally, I think it's important to note that the way our remote learning plan is designed is that the teams are working together to create those experiences.
Yeah. Yeah. So it's not for individual or five priest, individual preschool teachers that are as a team.
Correct.
Doing, reaching out, but then reaching out to their students, but they do.
Right. They're reaching out to their students in different ways, potentially.
As they are all throughout the, the whole system.
Correct.
Right, right. But they don't pay.
Pay for that.
Right. K through 12 don't pay.
They don't pay direct tuition.
Right. So that's where, again, that's again, falling back on.
Yeah. And that's why I feel like we're going down to 50%. That seems fair to me. Or just unenrolling if it's not working for you and saying, all right, we're done. This isn't an value add for our family.
For I am too. I'd be, yeah, I'd be for option one of just continuing what we voted for and keeping that caveat in that if people are experiencing financial problems, then they need to just apply for zero tuition.
Right. I agree with that.
So the people that are unenrolling, what am I, next question. So they're unrolling, we're giving them a refund from the date they unenrolled?
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah. I would not be retroactive. I would be from the date they unenroll.
Yeah, I'm just, I, I just wanted to clarify.
Sorry. Yeah.
Wanted to have it out there.
No, I mean, I, I actually would, would, I mean, I, I think that I, I would be depending on, I mean, if I don't, I don't agree with that necessarily because I think that we've been treating, like, you know, you have the Excel program who, who they stopped charging families. They do childcare. They stopped charging families. And so I think.
Stopped providing any service.
No, they did. They, they could, FASC has provided engaging with the staff, the students. They do it twice a week. So.
And it's different. It's not like, isn't the, isn't pre-K like certified too? And I mean, it's not, it's not equitable to daycare as, as much as for some families, that's their choice for how they are doing daycare for reasons. Cause that's a particular value add for them and for them, the, then the fact that you have children who are in IEPs that receive those services for free. There is something in there that is actually an education, like there is an educational component, right? So it is a little different, but you, I'm sorry. And I mean, interrupt what your point was. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, it was just that it's, one, it's, it's option, talk about the, the families that are paying. So that is considered optional childcare. I mean, the IEP piece is separate, but for others, it is considered optional.
Yeah. I guess I, having had to do childcare early on, I know that you, there are very particular reasons why someone would choose a pre-K option within an accredited, where there are teachers that are having to get paid. Like there's a reason for that value in the structure and why people would choose that as opposed to a different daycare option. And obviously right now it ends up being about daycare while you're, everyone's from home and trying to, it's being able to have some option. You needed it too. And now.
Well, I, I also want to make sure that we were sensitive to people with their going through. You have families who, you know, who, who have been laid off. And, and so if they prepaid for the year or, you know, paid for a certain point and they did not feel that they were, you know, it's what they want. I mean, I, I think that we, we should be considering a policy that allows, recognizes that financial hardship to allow a retroactive refund if they're asking for it.
Yeah, I don't know how that.
Especially if we're getting money from, you know, to help offset that cost.
So I don't know what, how it works as far as if you apply when and how you would get that assistance. get that, um, assistance, but.
Colleen, could you help without?
Here she comes. Maybe.
Hi. Um, well, say for food service, we're using the same format, people can apply for free reduced lunch, and that's where basing these waivers off of for pre-K. When someone applies for free reduced lunch, it starts the day that they are eligible. Uh, we do have new families that come into the system, we mentioned to them, it's part of enrollment, apply for free reduced lunch, sometimes it's two or three months before they do, we still do not, they're, you know, obviously eligible, but we do not offer them that, we can't, um, it's a little different, because it's food service, and it's federally funded, but, um.
You don't refund them the amount of money they paid for lunches for those first three months?
They're, they're responsible for that, yes.
Right, no, they, they can't say, but I was eligible as of three months ago, you know, refund my lunch money.
The speed with which they get, uh, ident-, you know, if they fill out the form, though, Colleen didn't.
It's almost immediately.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm just using that as, as, as a, as a parallel.
Right.
And it's very easy, it's online, um, it just asks you what your income is, it doesn't ask to verify anything, so, um, you don't have to be, you know, mess with papers and forms, and.
Mm-hmm.
We get notified each day if there's an application waiting.
Okay. Are there any other questions or considerations people wanna bring up or ask?
Lydia, you haven't talked much, what do you, what say you?
Um, well, I mean, I, I have, uh, a similar concern about the equity piece of it, but, um, but Jen said that they are addressing that, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, 'cause my screen is frozen. Um, Jen said that they are addressing that, and giving, you know, feedback to various teachers, and meeting with the unions, and so if there's a way to make, um, it equitable across the pre-K, then, um, I feel better about that. I still don't think we should be charging full tuition for any of the classes, um, and, um, yeah, I, I, it's the equity piece that, that I'm hung up on.
Yeah, me too, me too.
We can just send a message loud and clear, Jennifer, to Carol, um, as far as fixing that, or working on that?
Carol, that's not Carol, it's.
Donna and the preschool teachers.
Again, I, I don't wanna single out a group of people, we are, we are getting, um, we are getting feedback from all parents across all of the district, and all of, uh, and we are considering that feedback, and we are working collaboratively with the MEA, um, and with the Paraprofessional Association to adjust our remote learning plans to that feedback. Can I guarantee you that the people who, um, stated to you that they did not feel that they were paying for a service, um, because someone else was getting a better service in a different classroom, that they are going to, when we make these adjustments, feel as though we have addressed their concern, I'm not going to guarantee that, because I don't know what their concern was, and I do know that there are some things that we have families asking for, um, that we have, as a district, made a decision not to do, for very specific reasons, so I, I'm not going to state that, you know, the families who contacted you, um, you know, even with the revisions that we, we expect we may be putting in place, are going to be, um, feel as though it's the program they would, would have wanted as a remote learning program.
Their choice is to unenroll as of Monday, if they want to.
Okay, unless there's anything further, I feel like we should take a motion, um, and then we vote how we vote.
Take a motion? Um, I'll make a motion that, for the preschool program, that we continue with the same protocol that we voted for through May fourth, with, um, all tuition being reduced by fifty percent from May fourth to the end of the school year, those parents who are experiencing financial hardship should apply for, um, to apply to Colleen for, um, zero tuition. Does that work?
Do you wanna say anything about unenrollment, and effective date of unenrollment?
Yes, and if people would like to unenroll, they can, um, do so, and it will be effective as of the date that they unenroll.
Okay. Do I hear a second? All right, further discussion on that?
Would there be any consideration that, so you're saying that that would be, if they wanna unenroll, we would not do refund, you're talking about option one, right? So refund anyone from April, so we would be refunding folks who prepaid fifty percent?
Mm-hmm, yep.
Um, if they've already paid, and if they choose to unenroll, let's say, you know, Jennifer, great to hear the conversations that you're working with the MEA, but if they've still do not feel that there's an adequate level of, would, would we be considering allowing a refund if they've previously expressed concern about equity, and it's not rectified?
I think that's a slippery slope.
Huh?
I think that's a slippery slope, I think too, that becomes too subjective.
I agree.
Yeah. All right, any further discussion?
If they were really that unhappy up to this point, they could have unenrolled up to, before this.
And they did get a letter stating that, too.
Right, exactly.
That was last, was it last week?
Yeah.
Mary Jane?
I think that was April twenty-second.
Yeah, so it was last week.
That's a good point, it hasn't been that long.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think that's where the feedback that I heard was, was actually in response to that, um, going out, so, I mean, my body, you know, my point is, I just don't feel that, at this point, um, it, we can guarantee that every teacher is equitably providing the same level of service that are being paid for, which is different from K through twelve, and I, I appreciate that there are conversations with the MEA, but we, you know, to Jennifer's point, it can't be guaranteed that that may, um, change, and, and so, I just don't feel comfortable charging for the same level of fees for something that may not be happening in the same way from, you know, classroom to classroom, which is different for a pre-K, which is not required, um, per se, which is, which is different.
So, um, we can certainly vote differently, have different people vote differently in your considerations, Julie, and I don't disagree with it, I just feel like it's, again, very difficult to consider.
Yeah, it's hard.
Yeah, all right, so, um, I'm gonna vote based on the motion that's on the table, and unless there's any further discussion, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote, all in favor, um, I guess, um, we have to do roll call vote, we don't do all in favor, you just say yay or nay, so I'm gonna run through, get in the hang of this, golly. All right, so, um, Mary Brannley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
No.
Lydia Clancy?
Yay.
Mara Hogan?
Yes.
And Bethany Houlihan, yay. So if I could do like, uh, not really excited about my yay, but I'm saying yay anyways, if there was a vote for that, that would be, but, yeah, yeah. So that's, uh, four, it passes, four yeas, one nay. Okay, thank you, everybody, that was an important discussion, appreciate it. All right, so let's move on to, um, we have a policy update, it's also in your folder, and I'm gonna, um.
Been run, uh, I, I didn't get notice, I didn't get any feedback yet from, from the MEA on that one, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Can I, can I just go back to the preschool thing for a minute, is there gonna be a new letter sent out?
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I, go ahead.
Yeah, we'll send another letter out, Colleen and I will send another letter, and we will, uh, and, uh.
Just with the new vote of.
Yeah, I think we'll put in, you know, when they will get their unenrollment from, we'll put that in there, I wanted to be clear about that, so.
Yeah, 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 okay, thank you.
We'll get that out tomorrow.
Um, I do have something to address on the policy.
So, let me just, so we're gonna go back, or we're done now with, uh, sorry, I just wanna be clear, so we're done now with agenda item on pre-K, and we're gonna move into policy. Yep, we're ready to do that, so, okay, go ahead, now we're on policy, go ahead, Lydia.
Um, so first of all, we, um, we wanted to make it so that it covered all district employees and not just teachers, correct?
Yep, I will verify that, though.
Yep, so I went in and I changed the language, and then the revised one that includes all district employees instead of just teachers is in the folder. Um, what I did notice is that it doesn't, it has to do mostly with staff interaction with students online. There isn't anything that addresses, um, district employees' interaction with, um, in terms of making public comments, and, uh, that sort of thing, that I believe a couple of people have brought up. Is that addressed in, in a different policy or employee contract?
You know, I can take a look at, at some other ones, so when we have our policy meeting on, uh, Friday?
Friday.
Maybe we can have, look at a, a more cohesive one, because it is, it is pretty vague, that policy we looked at, so let's take a look, I'll, I'll put a few things together, I think I have a few already that we can look at, and, and make it more comprehensive, so I can definitely do that for our meeting on Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
Mary, Mary Jane, I think one of the other feedback that I would, um, and hopefully maybe part of the discussion is, um, the social media platforms that, um, we have as a district, I'd like to see a little bit more structure on how, um, maybe that could be with the approval of the superintendent.
That's in the policy.
I, okay, I looked, hold on, 'cause I saw something and said about administrator, but maybe I was reading it differently then, um.
I actually brought Adam on board for that, so hopefully I'm gonna have him take a look at it, too.
Yeah.
I actually, I actually had him in a couple of conversations the last couple of days about this, so, so I'm, I'm getting more feedback from him as well, so I hope, you know, by Friday, we should have something good, I've actually, uh, like I said.
Oh, great.
Kinda hijacked him for, for some of this.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So.
You know, 'cause I, I honestly, reading about what's happened in other districts, and, you know, as we become more reliant on, um, electronic, you know, remote learning, and, you know, Google, and all these things, not that far away from us, you know, and many different levels, you just, it scares me that, um, how things are just, you know, the monitoring, you know, all that, it just feels very loosey-goosey, um, and, um, and I, it worries me, uh, for the safety of kids, I mean, obviously, you never suspect that someone would be in your, you know, environment that way, but I think the, having more stringent protocols in place will help, um, bring more concern, you know, reassurances to families in that regard.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree, especially with this, uh, new remote platform, it's gonna be, uh, yeah, a lot of new, new things coming out as a result of it, I'm sure.
Jennifer is.
Jennifer needs to be unmuted.
Yeah.
She's putting out the bad signal.
One second, Colleen has to do it, I'm, for some reason, I can't.
Okay, sorry, I had a, a child situation. Um, I do just wanna let you know that in regards to, um, platforms that we are using for remote learning, they are all being run through the technology department, and I don't remember the name of the, um, list in the organization, but they are all meeting privacy, um, protection, so just, um, so families are aware for any platform that we're using.
Yeah, um, is that your, is that, that's not like Instagram, I'm thinking like, social media platforms, I'm thinking also.
Right, I just wanted to clarify for the remote learning plan and the remote learning specifically, um, we have been, and, and in fact, that's why we are not using Zoom, I, we did get some feedback on the parent survey that they would prefer that, or some of our teachers would prefer that, um, there are some other platforms out there that we have chosen not to use because of that specifically, so I just wanted to put that out regarding the remote learning plan, since that is something all of our students are engaged in currently.
Yeah, I guess that was one of the workarounds that happened in another district, um, trying to work outside of Google Classroom.
Right.
Um, I did see somewhere on, just kinda somewhat related, that Google meets, um, and I don't know if, as a school committee, we would wanna revisit if Zoom or not, but I guess at some point, they're gonna be allowing non-Google people to join meetings, and, yeah, so.
So the way we have our platform established, um, and we can have Adam provide you with a report on this, uh, they are not able to come in, uh, to the meeting, um, unless they're approved by the provider, uh, or the administrator. Additionally, um, we are setting up our, um, public meets, for example, um, they are setting them up with nicknames which, uh, require, um, additional levels of security, so, um, again, trying to address all of those components, um, but those are some of the reasons that, you know, we're, we're being very careful about what we're asking our staff to do with our students, for sure.
So are we gonna have a procedure to back this up, like, you know, if, if a parent were to, you know, happen to see the interaction or something like that, like the, the direction of who people go to, um, in the event, like, if I happened to, you know, see that something was going on, who would I contact, or just, you know, a regular person on the street kinda thing, um, 'cause it talks about different people, you know, policing it kind of, but if, if somebody else were to do it, how does that work?
That, that's a good point, we can definitely put that in the procedure manuals with the policy, that can definitely go in there.
That would be great.
So are there any other considerations, 'cause we are gonna talk on Friday, so we could take into account anything else people are, have in mind.
Does that mean we're not voting on this now?
That's right.
Yeah, because we, we need feedback from the MEA.
Yeah. And then, we will be able to soon as we have it, so the next meeting, um, yeah, that was, was very possible, but if they did have, I mean, this is, this is part of the process, and there's obviously been a lot going on, so we've been starting again with important, high, high priority policies, um, but they did, obviously, if they did have some considerations, it may not be ready for next week, um, they'd have to be worked out.
They have to get run through legal again, after?
Um, perhaps, we'll have to see, unless, you know, unless it's adopted somewhere else, but I would think we'd have to.
It was adopted from the way it was, but we're gonna change it, it was from mask, so, yeah.
As I was saying, we're, we're tweaking it a little bit, so.
If it gets to, yeah, if it starts getting tweaked to more substantial, more substantial ways, then yeah. Right.
Yeah, we had talked about incorporating some of Westwood Public Schools' social media guidelines as well, they've got a really, really, um, comprehensive, and I think, um, well-thought-out social media policy.
Okay, we'll take, I'll take a look at that again, you said Westwood?
Well, that's what, I have it, I can bring it Friday, or I.
I think you already shared that anyway, I think, I think you might have already. Okay, great.
All right, are we ready to move on to the next agenda item?
I think so.
Okay, very good, thank you, Lydia's been the champion for policies, appreciate that, and, um, just everyone's input for us to consider. So the next is agenda number nine, is the MSBA feasibility study recommendation for fall, so I'm gonna, um, leave this to folks that have been hearing other conversations, and what we might need to do for other boards, is what I understand, this is what we, what we need to be able to do, but I, uh, had this on here thinking like, that I heard someone say that we needed to.
Oh, did you want?
Vote on a recommendation, but I'm not exactly sure, so I'll leave it to Natasha.
Okay, so I think we, where we left off, we had already, um, you know, made a recommendation, I think that as the commu-, you know, things changed since months ago, since we've engaged in the feasibility, um, program, I think there's potential wavering, um, somewhere on the horizon, and, and so what, um, I think, as a school committee, it might be helpful to reinforce our support for the MSBA process, um, to send a more, like, in light of current circumstances, we will still be, um, you know, like to make sure, because I know we have a, they have not changed their deadline, um, as regards to funding, and, and so I think that that was something, that's kind of the gist of it. Um, another piece to add to that is, I know there are concerns about the MSBA being sustain, able to sustain to do projects that are on, within their pipeline, and what I would, um, what I, one of the things that came out of the advocacy, um, MS, uh, the mask last Friday, was really advocating on the federal level for, um, legislation and bills about infrastructure, um, because ultimately, that can, um, trickle down to potential, um, funding support for MSBA, because they are, um, supported by sales, sales tax in the state, and so, um, so if we, you know, at some point, we may need to look about. supported by sales, sales tax in the state and so, so if we, you know, at some point we may need to look about what particular pieces and they, they sent an email, but it didn't really include the, the infrastructure bills that are being talked about on the federal level. But I think that's worth exploring and if we can advocate to our representatives at that level, that would be, you know, helpful as well and so that's kind of where it is. I, I don't think, it's not any change in our position of what we've already discussed. It's more reinforcing our support for the process.
I, I would want to add to that based on what I had, what I've read on MSBA is you don't want to lose your place in line.
Yeah.
Especially now. I mean, it's never a good thing, but I think in particular, it is crucial that you, you know, that you remain your place in line so that whatever comes out of the feasibility study, you've got your place secured to go forward with the recommendation that makes the most sense for Maynard. But so Natasha, you're right, certainly advocacy will help to ensure that funding is there so we can have it sooner rather than later. Nothing like getting approved and finding out it's five years before they can fund it.
Right.
But if, if we lose our place in line, we can find ourselves, you know, eight or nine years out.
And prior to pandemic, there was talk that it could be up to eight years. I would say imagine now that could even be further where they would have to at some point slow down projects that would, they potentially are accepting into the program. If, you know, if at all, and, and, and I know that Green Meadow, you know, and who knows where down the road Fowler, you know, i- it's more, it's looking at all of our resources and it, it's something we need to do anyway as a district to make sure that we are in the right direction with where we are going for planning for our future, for our, our buildings, our resources and, and so forth. So we're gonna be getting a reimbursement from this at some point anyway, so it's not a total loss. And if we were to need to do other work, the feasibility study, some, at some point would need to be done anyway. And so anyway, it just, just really nothing new information, just more reinforcing what we should be advocating for. Lydia, did you have anything you wanted to add to that? I know you had some insight from the conversations.
No, just again, that I felt like there was definite wavering going on in terms of not just they're supporting the feasibility study, but even bringing it to the table and asking the town to support it. So I definitely feel like we're gonna need to do some promotion and marketing of, of why we need this to happen now.
And that's a great point too, like if, if, just bring it to town, right? If it's a town decision to not pursue it, that's really outside of our control, right? We, we can only recommend what we do. I mean, that, that, that could happen with the, the roof at town meeting, I know, as well, so.
I just want to point out that I was on the MSBA website week and a half, I don't know when exactly, but, and they do say we're good for now, but we can't predict anything for FY twenty-two and beyond. So as you're saying Irene, my guess is they may be able to, to follow out commitments they've already made of money that's always already allocated, but there's no guarantee.
You don't want, you don't want to move it.
So do you want to maybe just make, make a motion? It doesn't seem like it's a lot of detailed discussion, but we just.
Yeah, so last week or the week before, I had mentioned that I'd be happy to put together a letter of support and the reasons why, if you still think that that would be beneficial and then we could vote on that maybe next week when we have our meeting. I'd send, I'd start it and then send it to you guys and see if I'm missing anything. And I think Jennifer's the best person because you, you did such a great job, Jen, at the February meeting, explaining all the reasons regardless of where we go, of why this feasibility study is needed, so.
Sure, happy to.
Do you want me to, to do that? And then we can actually have a letter that we're sending on to them of support.
The letter to the Board of Sluckman and FinCom?
Yep, exactly. Yep, so that they've got all the reasons again that we have cited individually, but put it all comprehensively together, pretty much what we're talking about right now.
Mary.
Yep.
You might want to run the letter by Justin DiMarco too.
Okay, all right, just to.
I could, so I would not have provided. I'm just, I would give everything to Justin because he's the one who's gonna tell us whether we're right in terms of the actual construction components and that type of thing. So yes, absolutely.
Yeah, and he, he's, I know already supported this as well, so I think it's more of a, a board to board or committee to committee.
He'll just make sure that whatever language we're using.
Is accurate.
Correct.
Yeah.
I know a lot of stuff about curriculum. I don't know a lot of stuff about rooms.
Yeah, but you did such a great job at that February meeting.
I can do process.
Ah, dear. So I will, I'll put that together and like I say, I'll run it, yeah, I'll run it by him and then run it by you guys and see if I'm forgetting anything and then maybe we can vote on it in the next meeting. If that makes sense.
Do you think that, so I mean, just being considerate, I mean, Justin does not work for us. So I just want to be considerate of, you know, what his, I don't know what's on his right now going around if we're gonna be asking him to do something on behalf of us. If we have.
Yeah, I can tell you that he said, since in lieu of not having a facilities director, he is our facilities director.
Yeah, right.
He said that to me, so.
Is he, is what you're saying? Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so I'll give him a couple of weeks.
All right.
All right.
Great, good. Okay. Anything else on this before we move on? So the done item number ten is set public hearing for proposed budget. And based on earlier conversation, subcommittee recommendation, did you guys consider that?
No.
Oh. Should we consider that right now?
We have to have it before town meeting.
Yeah.
Thirteenth of June.
I mean, you can have it, you can have it early June or you could, I mean, I don't know.
I think we were.
So we were meeting with, we were trying to, with Ken, Ken, with the FinCom, we were trying to time it in, in some way that it was before we met with, no.
It was gonna be after.
After, right, because we would get feedback from Ken, sorry, or in the FinCom.
That's okay. So he said.
That was May eighteenth, I think is their last.
Well, he said, yeah, to defer to May eighteenth for Monday, May eighteenth to meet with FinCom.
So nothing, so maybe, so that would be either, that's the last week in May would be after that and then then we're going into June, but I don't know, again, I don't know what's going on with people in the community graduation, remote graduation or something. I don't know if I wanna, maybe, do we want to have a town meeting at a peak where, I don't know how that's gonna work out. But I would imagine it would happen somewhere around there.
Yeah, I, I mean, I would imagine the graduation date's gonna be probably the same day, it's just a matter of how we do.
Yeah, so it's June fifth is, is graduation, which is a Friday, so we wouldn't have a, our public hearing anyway on a Friday.
I haven't. Yeah, so maybe like the week of, the last week in May, should we think about, that will be.
Right now, we've got a meeting scheduled fourth by our schedule. So I don't know if that would be a good time.
Oh, I thought we already abandoned that.
Okay.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm just asking, I thought that we had.
Yeah, we did. We had said we would have to determine it after we got more, and did have more conversation with budget and had more of a sense of kind of where things stand and as things were rapidly developing, literally like sometimes day by day.
I'm not saying May seventh, I said June fourth.
June fourth.
Fourth, sorry.
Okay.
We already have a meeting scheduled that night. So we could keep that.
But is, isn't that right at the day before, like potential graduation?
Yeah, so it's not the night of.
Any others to Justin then?
I was just thinking the, the last week in May, because then it'll be, we'll, we'll be, we'll be meeting with Ken potentially or FinCom on the eighteenth of May and then having the conversations with the public not that far after. But I don't know if we wanna, how I mean, just June thirteenth is where, you know, is town meeting, so that's the only thing.
Seventh or the twenty-eighth?
Right, so if we do something on June fourth, I just worry if before town meeting, it leaves a small window if there's any public hearing things from the community. It's only a week for us to be able to consider what feedback we might hear from the public.
Any, anyone else have considerations? From Mary Jane, Jennifer, Irene, when she'd obviously be working side by side in relation to budget and the hearing and all that, do you have any considerations around it? I think. Yeah, okay. I honestly, the twentieth or the fourth thing, fine to me. If it doesn't matter other people, we might as well not be the night before the graduation. That's my thought.
Yeah.
If, if, if it kind of being whichever and that extra week isn't gonna buy us anything, then twenty-eighth, May twenty-eighth?
Okay.
So are we canceling, are, are we canceling the June fourth meeting then? Or, or moving it to the twenty-eighth?
I'm gonna let's say, yeah. We're, we're so in very different schedule right now, but let's say, yeah, and then we'll see how things go. That's not assuming that there won't be any more additional and we will continue to kind of do our meetings as we need to, as we emerge from.
So is that gonna be at seven PM? Will that be the same?
I feel like we've done, public hearings have gone.
Before, like.
Before, and then you move into a regular meeting because you have to vote.
Okay.
But I feel like, so I think, feel like you can start a little earlier, but I'm, anyone that remembers differently how we've done it in the past.
It's gonna be different anyway.
Or however you choose to do it now. Yeah, anyone have six thirty start and do the public hearing and how long do we do that portion for? An hour? I'm trying to think back to how we did it last year and I just.
I can't remember either.
All right.
I wasn't here, so can't help you.
Yeah.
I don't know, I, I don't know, is there an allocated amount of time for? I mean, what if the public want to keep commenting? I mean.
There is an allocated amount of time and you, generally speaking, there has been consideration for extending the public hearing, but you have to close the public hearing, open the regular session, close the regular session or suspend the regular session and then reopen the public hearing.
Last year's public hearing started at seven PM and it was a regular business meeting agenda.
Any kind, so how is that structured? What does it look like?
I don't have the actual agenda up.
That's all right.
But it was, I do recall it was an actual regular agenda and it was just a budget, agenda item in the agenda.
Allocated a certain amount of time for it, like we do now, yeah.
I think that was actually at, at the Fowler auditorium that day, actually.
Yeah, that's what they.
Always in the Fowler auditorium.
Yeah, okay. So we can work out details. I don't know, do we need to vote on, on the public hearing date?
I don't know.
All right.
I think you just set the dates.
Yeah, so without objection, if there's no concern about voting for any particular reason, then we would just set that date and say that it is May twenty-eighth and we can start, do it at seven PM work for people.
Yeah.
All right, then we'll stick with seven PM. As much as I sometimes like earlier. I'm kidding. All right, very good. So we got that and then I can return to Ken and if folks can make sure, I'll send an email first to confirm that May eighteenth is gonna work for FinComs. That's what he suggested work for a joint meeting. Okay. All right, I'll follow up via email with this before I officially go back to Ken.
For the eighteen?
May eighteenth. That would be joint meeting with FinCom prior to public hearing on May twenty-eighth. Okay, very good. So I would suggest we're just, we're at nine forty-five PM. We've had some important things to discuss. I don't think that the next item was necessarily, I don't feel like I need to, I've suggested, I don't feel like we need to discuss the liaison, we could, it's actually something that I could actually say like, hey, I might suggest this and if we all agree to it, then we could just talk about it at the next meeting. It's, liaisons haven't had to have a vote per se, we could decide to do a vote too, but that could be next time. So without objection, I suggest we skip that and move right into members comments.
Natasha and I have been going anyway, so.
Right, so I don't think it's gonna be a big deal, but it's just not worth spending time on right now. Yeah. Yeah, okay, cool. So, and appreciate the time that everyone's put into various meetings and I know that you've been going regularly, Natasha and Lydia, so thank you. So I'm gonna move into number twelve then, members comments. And I will open up the floor and just for everyone who's still on to know, this is also where members might mention other things they've attended and subcommittee report out.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Um, the first thing on my thoughts was Lydia and I are still kind of working through a new member packet. And actually Lydia, I was hoping that maybe we could schedule something for next week that we could actually figure out more what it's gonna look like, because there are a couple of questions that I had from the last meeting that we had.
Okay.
So maybe we can schedule that offline. I've gotten a couple of texts, emails about which I'm assuming most people have about more, students wanting more peer contact through school in some way, either with you know, online classes, you know, more face-to-face meetings through video chats so that they can at least see their, their peers. So I don't know if there's something more that we can do on that. I know that you're, you guys are already working on that, but, and I'm sure you've already heard from a number of families about that, but I just wanted to let you know that I've also been hearing that. And then I just wanted to thank everybody that, that did the restructuring for the music. I'm still a little disappointed that Strings isn't in the, the school day, but I'm, I'm happy to hear that things look better this year or this coming year than how they were this year. So thank you very much for putting in the time to restructure. And then I just wanted to thank everybody else for all the work they're doing. And like I said last week, it really makes a big difference. And, and thanks for all the parents doing what you do to be your children's teachers, which is really difficult. That's it.
Next.
I'll go. So we pretty much did the rundown on the budget subcommittee today during item number five. I don't think we need to revisit that. Policy Subcommittee is meeting Friday. We're gonna go over the social media again and we are all oh, we can't hear you, try again. Oh. Can everyone else hear me and not her also?
I can hear you. I lost Lydia.
Yeah.
Suggested in the first readings. Can you guys hear me?
We can now.
Okay, where, do I need to go back?
Yeah.
You were on policy, you started to say policy and then you froze for some time. Go ahead.
Okay. Sorry, Mike, our connection is horrible. I don't know why. So we are going to review the social media policy. We are going to do the first edits to the policies that we reviewed March second at the first reading. And then we are also gonna go through and pick out the most crucial policies that we need to address, address given our current set of circumstances. And that's it for policy. And that's it for policy and I could thank everybody, everyone's thanking everybody, but I, I, I wanna echo what Mauro said because I know that parents are going through so much right now and I am fortunate in that I only have one child and that she is really self-motivated and I don't have to pound her to do her work and I don't have to hold her hand. And I know that there's so many parents out there who are just struggling every day to keep their sanity because they've got two or more kids, different ages, different grade levels and and this is just really stressful for all of us. So I, I just wanna say big hugs to all you parents out there who are pulling double, triple duty. And that's it.
Thanks, Lydia.
Go if you want, mine's short. I just, I wanted to reiterate what, what you had said at the beginning, Beth Lynn, the the video from the kids to the teachers, to the staff was pretty incredible and thanks to Jennifer for putting that together. Really appreciate that. That was great. And pretty similar to everybody else. Parents are really struggling, but there are also some of our staff who are also at this meeting that have to do the teacher bit and then they have to go and do the parent bit and then they have to do the household bit. So it's all across the board. That, that everybody is, is doing the best, best, best that they can with an awful lot on their plate. So it doesn't go unnoticed for sure and we really appreciate it. So that's it.
Okay. I just wanted to echo again, thanks for everyone in the community. I know that these have been really tough times and for me, I mean, and Jennifer mentioned, you know, talking with staff directly, I mean, talking about make it seem like it's such casual conversation, but it's really hard to talk about people losing their jobs in light of what's going on right now and you know, personally, I had a lot of anxiety coming into today's meeting because of understanding the impact that, you know, that potentially is for teachers who are, were staff who are grappling with what they're doing right now and now have the, you know, other added element of potentially not having a job. And it's just tough conversations all around. So I recognize the difficulty of what, that it's not like, not decisions that are made in light and and I appreciate the thought. It doesn't make it any easier. But I wanted to give that a moment of just to reflect that we talked about it so loose in current times. This is really, makes it even harder to, to talk about. So when I think about, you know, what, you know, saving 15,000 here, 10,000 there could do, that's a job. And so that's where it, it just adds up. And through that lens, that's, you know, just a overall, again, it's just all tough conversations. And they're, I imagine we're gonna have some more tough conversations. They're not gonna be much easier either. And just to thank all the board members, I know everyone has been putting in time. I appreciate the work, the conversations. And one thing I did wanna circle back to Mary Jane and, and Jennifer. I don't know if you guys had any other feedback about the facilities director. I know Sarah. Or if it maybe was sent over already regarding the, the conversations. So I didn't know if you could circle back to her and see on that and also thinking about the custodians and where we are. I think that, I don't know if it makes sense that we need to schedule another negotiations, subcommittee meeting potentially at some point. So that is really it. And oh, Irene, I know we didn't put a lot of time on this, but the service contracts, you talked, I know you were reassessing those. We talked a little bit about.
I, I don't have any information for you now, other than to tell you that we're on a three-year lease for at least some portion of them. So that base amount does not go away. And I'm trying to get more information. I'm doing a deeper dive. We definitely have some copiers that we're not making any copies with. So the payment for those should be only the lease payment.
Okay.
And they, because it's electronics, they know exactly how many copies are made, but I, I can't give you any numbers on that today.
That's fine. I appreciate you really reassessing that again. You know, again, every, leave no stone unturned.
Absolutely.
Is really important. And I did have another question for you, something that did come up of the advocacy. There was conversation about the payroll tax credit, the second emergency relief and because I guess state and local government officials were excluded from this. And I don't know if you had, could maybe expand on, on that, how it differed from like private entities where they're getting relief and municipalities were not.
I mean, I, I'm not sure why that would be true. Now, some of that could be depending on what they were talking about for the tax relief. The municipalities, we don't pay into social security. We pay into the state, you know, retirement systems. Whether that's MTRS, you know, for teachers or the municipal side, you know, for municipal workers. So it depends on what kind of tax relief they were talking about. Some of it is just extending the dates. So it's not that anyone's saving money so much as businesses have been told, hey, we'll give you to September to make a payment you normally had to make in June. So some of that was designed just for cash flow.
Okay. And, and again, just the other piece was part of that, they were talking about getting advocacy from school boards to, to the federal level to fully fund the IDEA for special education. I think currently at this time, I think more so than any, it's needed. And so the, they did send over a template letter and I'd like to see if maybe we could add that to the next agenda where we can sign on as a board advocating that at the federal level that they fully fund that piece of legislation.
That would be nice.
Yeah. It would be. It's another opportunity and I think it's, you know, I mean, again, any little bit helps, but
Absolutely.
So from a school committee level, I, I think it would be, I'd hope that we garner some support there. That's, that's all I got.
I guess I wanted to throw something in and Natasha, I think you and Lydia were at the meeting. Just to thank the, the selectmen for the support of putting the article at town meeting for the roof of Green Meadow and also the support for the solar panels. So I think that, 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 you know, we hope that that would happen, but it was, it's great to have their support on that too, so.
Yeah, some great conversations there. Yeah, it was really great, thoughtful. They did a, I, I appreciated their deliberations.
Oh, I would get excited about the solar panels.
Me too.
So I'm like a true New Englander. Anything else Natasha or anyone else? Um, thank you. So I don't have much. I did wanna mention that that there is, as part of the new Department of Education Remote Learning Guidance that, that the Mass Association School Committees put out, they said that there's also some DESI resources to support students and families who for myriad reasons may not have the capacity to access or take full advantage of remote learning opportunities. So I was just interested in seeing what I may be able to find to to just, I don't know, you may have some things on the website too for family support. And I'm not asking that we create anything, just if we see anything, then we can throw it onto the website. And then also just, also just anyone that is education right now is just, I mean, it's just so much and to be the the, the behind the scenes kind of backbone trying to, everyone's trying to do their part to hold, hold us up. So I just wanna consider also just the wellbeing of staff and administration and support for all of you and just wanted to just thank you for, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes that it's kind of hard to understand for everyone and everyone's situation is different too. So in any case, I just wanted to consider both support for families, support for all of us. As we're trying to make it through truly this unprecedented moment. So thank you for having what felt like a very wait, it's 10, it's literally 10:00 PM right now. Very grateful that everyone stuck it through. Here we are. And thank you to the folks that were listening in and I don't know if we decided we're gonna have our next meeting.
We can do that.
So that's the only other thing. So I don't know if, Lydia looks muted. Can we unmute her just in case? Do you wanna be unmuted?
Oh, I just, I wanted to say, do we wanna see what, if Brian has any feedback or comments or anything?
Um, yeah, again, for anyone that's still on, Brian is going to be, is our incoming superintendent, starting on July 1st, which is coming up much faster than. Yeah, so Brian, anything you'd like to say?
I would just like to recognize all the hard work that you all are doing. I had a good conversation today with the middle school principals during the day. Just to sort of get brought up to speed on what's happening there. I'll schedule one with the high school principals coming up shortly. And we've already been in contact with Rob at the elementary school. So the pandemic has definitely changed how we communicate. But it's great to be part of the school committee meetings and hear the conversations that you're having all the way through their thoughtful discussions, their difficult discussions. So thank you for letting me part of it.
And Brian, thank you so much also, because I know every meeting that Lydia and I have gone to or anyone else has gone to, like you're, you're present there in conjunction with juggling your own still your current job, you have really let yourself to engage and, you know, immerse yourself in the mainard ways and, and happenings. And right now that's critical. And I know that's not an easy lift for you and just thank you so much for, for, for doing that.
You're welcome.
He hasn't scared you off, which is good.
Yeah, he keeps going to meetings and so I mean, I guess, you know, look, we have him signed. He already signed the dotted line, so.
I mean, for the long haul, it's good.
Awesome.
So thank you. That leaves us with, do we feel like we need to sit on another meeting now? Do we go? Do the, what is it? Email.
I don't know if we have anything pressing. I think it's almost like depending on what, what comes up, right? I don't wanna meet just for the sake of meeting and respecting everybody's time, but I know that things kind of evolve sometimes haphazardly, so I don't know if we, we maybe wanna try two weeks out or do we feel like we need to do anything sooner?
If I'm not hearing everyone saying we need to, then that's suggested to me, we could do two.
Let me just throw a suggestion that my FinCom sometimes does. If we're having a joint meeting and you're having a joint meeting with FinCom, we'll have our own meeting like a half hour before. So if there's anything that has to be done, we'll do it in that half hour and then we'll open it, you know, to the joint meeting. You know, with, with school committee or select board, whoever it is that we're having a joint meeting with. So we just.
What if we meet on?
A scheduled meeting.
What if we meet on the 14th of, before, that's a Thursday before FinCom? I think we also might need an executive session for other considerations. And I wonder if we might get questions about any of that before.
That worked for folks to do the 14th?
Yeah.
Do executive session and then.
That's fine. So not meeting next week?
Right, you would instead.
And we don't feel the need to have an executive session before that, because I thought it was.
You mean sooner?
Yeah.
Before the 14th? Yeah, maybe. I don't know. I just anticipate we might get questions. I don't know. By FinCom before, so I think before we meet with FinCom for sure.
But, but the letter that we received from the Board of Selectmen made it sound like it was more imperative earlier, but just throwing it out there.
I, I, maybe we just do an executive session next week?
Could do that too, yeah. Maybe we could talk to the selectmen ahead of time and just get a better understanding of what they're looking for.
Out of this.
Just get the numbers sent out to you guys. I'm not sure you actually need an executive session. I, I mean, we already have it done for the custodians and I'm sure Irene, we have it done like I did anything. Irene already did it for the, and she can do it again, or the other hourly workers and just send you out the spreadsheet. I mean, that's really all for really is exploring, research. That's all I can give it. So I'm not sure we need a meeting for that.
Like that.
Um, I mean, but it might involve some conversation.
I guess maybe we can make that decision once, look at, I, I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't know.
So we get the, we can take a look at the spreadsheet, the numbers and then decide on executive session. We could do that.
Done tomorrow, because I. Was teachers, because there's, that, that's where there's the most people.
Yeah.
I think this is a private conversation though. I don't.
I know, but I'm just saying, I, I will put together the spreadsheets with the numbers.
Yeah.
That you have the information you need to make a decision about whether or not you're gonna meet, what discussions you wanna have. But I'll be able to do that tomorrow. Yeah, because honestly, I'm not sure what this Board of Selectmen wants us to do other than research and explore. So I'm not sure what discussion we will have.
Right, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page though and whenever we are asked questions.
That's a good point.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. So as of right now, then we would hold a meeting on the 14th. We'll have the joint meeting with FinCom on the 18th. We have our public hearing on the 28th. Okay.
There's a Memorial Day holiday somewhere in there. Yay.
Oh, that's good.
At the end of May.
Very good. All right, well, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Okay, then I think we would end by roll call vote as well. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Mauro Rogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Lydia Clancy?
Yay.
Beth Lynn Houlihan, yay. All right, 10:08 PM, we adjourned.
And Lydia, thank you for hanging in there. I know you weren't feeling that great tonight, so.
We lost her, that was it. All right, bye.
Thank you, everybody. Namaste.